Good evening. It's Monday, April 24th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is the Master Plan Implementation Committee briefing. Ms. Maria, I must say that the paperwork you sent is very impressive, very organized.
Hi, thank you. It's a very organized group, actually. It's a delightful group to work with. I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at what was presented this time. What we are providing to you is the first quarterly update for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and also sort of a little companion document that served as an overview of, you know, how, you know, what we've accomplished so far, and, you know, how, what we're going to be tackling for the rest of the year. It's a work in progress, and so what you received is a snapshot of the Excel spreadsheet. There's also in the packet a, sort of an intake form that each of the liaisons have been using to, you know, speak with each of our boards. And, you know, it's just forming, so some of the boards have pro- or committees or departments have provided a lot of detailed information, and others are really just getting going. And all that's fine, so, you know, what we've done then is collected what we have, put it onto a spreadsheet, and then we took the, just the top, top summary for you, and provided it so you can see across the boards and committees where, a quick snapshot of where everybody is at. I have a couple of questions for you. One is coming from the committee, if you really want these reports quarterly? Because that will mean about every other or every two meetings, we'll be providing these reports. So is that still a schedule that the board, you know, the planning board wants to see these? And also, we're just getting to the point where we're starting to see some of the committees that are really just getting into things, and they're, we're starting to see where some of the, there's going to be, you know, some things that have to be discussed. So I also wanted to talk to the board about that. So for example, I have the EDC, and we had the interim EDC coordinator come and speak to us about, you know, with, I, questions about how does she work with other boards where they might be sharing a goal but not responsible for a goal or recommendation? And we have another board as well, I think it's Municipal Technology Committee and other committees, and so that's, I think, where the friction's going to be. And, you know, we're going to tackle those at our committee meetings next. We have a new member, as you know, Lisa Brascio stepped down. She kicked us off with being the chair, and has since left the committee, and Sam Stivers has come on to the committee. And last meeting, Sam brought sort of new element to, to the group, and tried to get us to think about prioritization, and how to line that up with, if the committee, for example, wants to do, accomplish a goal but needs funding, and whether, how we can align that with, you know, a funding source for them, or whether they need to bring it to this committee, or even select board for funding. And so that's, that's going to be what we tackle next. So I think I'll just stop and see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. That's awesome, that, that, from the master plan, it's continued on, and we'll, it's actually a working document, not just a shelf filler, so that's great. Would you prefer reporting back to the planning board like twice a year, or would that work out better, or?
You know, it's, it's so automated in a way, these collection forms, and it's very easy to just populate the report. We're fine with quarterly, it's just if it's too much for this board, because it does seem like kind of a lot. But we'll also be making it available online, if it's not already online, and I'm not sure if it is. I think that Judith might have spoken to you, Mimi, about that, the Master Plan Implementation page, and if it can link, link from the planning board, I think is something that's in the works.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think quarterly is fine. I think it's going to become interesting in the next, you know, couple of months. I just wanted to say, I, I wasn't part of the process for the last implementation, master plan implementation, but I think that the, one of the big changes to this year is to try to get more boards and committees to talk with each other. And so that's what we're hearing right now, is those are coming back to us, they, how do we do this, what is the right way to do this? So that seems just perfectly natural to me.
Awesome, thank you.
So if it's okay with you, then we'll stick to the quarterly. And also, at any time, now that you are seeing the documents, if you have any, anything different that you want to see, or a different way or format, or focus on something, yeah, just let us know, let me know.
Mr. Mills?
No, I echo Mimi's sentiments. It's great to see that the master plan is being leveraged and used on a regular basis. The report is great. It's, it's excellent that you say that it's easy to create on a quarterly basis. Personally, you know, that's going to be up to me in a couple more weeks, but I would think twice a year would be plenty. There's not much that happens necessarily quarterly that fast within the town, but, you know, if it's easy enough to do, and you guys want it, go for it.
I, I think twice would be fine, I mean, because I'll continue to give updates if there's any, like, maybe snags, or things that maybe I should keep you apprised of. And I don't know that things are moving that fast, to be honest. I mean, they are on individual committees, but like, overall, when you're looking at it, you might say that this looks a lot similar to the others, but one board might be pulling out and doing a lot more. You know, that, you know, what I'd like to be able to talk to you about at some point in the future, what we'll tackle, is the, the short-term, medium, and long-term goals, because you might be looking at this report, it might look like, hey, that committee hasn't made any progress, but it might be a long-term goal.
Right.
So we, we need to kind of make it a little bit more so you can recognize, if they're not doing work, it's because it's not on, in front of them right now.
Yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Stein?
I think that twice a year is definitely sufficient, considering having reviewed the spreadsheet, these are very long-range agendas. One thing that's jumped out at me was the golf course committee section, working to reduce the number of golf balls that leave the course. Did somebody from that committee appear, or is there a, a delegate from the golf course committee that's on the, that's on your committee?
I can't remember who, who has got the golf course. I can, I can find out for you, but...
Well, it can wait till the next...
I think it's Kat, because she's got open space, and she might have golf course two, or if it was Lisa's, it might have gone to Sam Stivers. I can't recall, I can look it up really quickly, but...
Having been frequently dodging balls myself on Lattice Squam, I'm particularly interested in that progress, but, just generally speaking, I believe twice a year is plenty. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, 241, 245 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval, and also special permit for lower impact development. Karina, do you want to bring us up to date on this one?
Sure. I just want to point out that one of the planning board members, Marnie Houlihan, is not available this evening, so we'll be providing her Mullins forms so that she can get up to speed and be back on the panel to take action when the time comes. So, let me just get my notes here. So since the last planning board public hearing on April 3rd, at which an extension was granted to the action deadline for the planning board for the major site plan approval, and for the lower impact development special permit, we received a third submission from the applicant team with Beals, from Beals and Thomas, acting as the engineer. That submission was forwarded to Fussin O'Neill for review, to planning board members, and also to the town departments. We received a follow-up review letter from Fussin O'Neill on April 19th, which we provided to the applicant team. In the interim, we also, actually today, we received a nice, very helpful waiver request letter, reiterating some of the, or the waivers that were remaining in the Fussin O'Neill review comments. So it appears that all the comments, per se, that were technical in aspect that needed to be addressed, were addressed, and what's left are waiver requests that the planning board will have to vote on at some point. We also received a PowerPoint presentation from attorney Kathy Garrahan today, to which she wants to speak to when she gets the floor. And then, was there anything else? I believe there were a couple of members going to join from Zoom, is that true, or are you all here in person?
Yes, there's...
The architect, Chad Wallman, will participate?
The architect, Chad, and then also Nate Butts from Beals and Thomas is remote, but Dave LaPointe is here in person, so...
In person, too?
Yeah.
Okay, super. And then, did you have one green card envelope left? Do you already have it?
Yes, I already, I gave it to Stanfield, yeah.
All right, so we have that, too. So you might remember Kathy Garrahan from the few meetings, and Najah, who is representative or actually the owner of the property.
Welcome. So you had a PowerPoint that you wanted to give?
So we do have a PowerPoint that Najah will actually walk through, and, and I just thought I'd just give a quick summary first, jumping off from where the planner has, has left. So to start, just for the record, Catherine Garrahan from Laferm Bouchen Dwee. And we're here, we're very pleased to be here again tonight. Najah Stratton, as mentioned, is here to my left. Stephanie Parkhurst is also with us from, Conover is also here with us from Park, Park House, in addition to those I've already mentioned. We wanted to first give you with a short recap of the project and updates related to operations of the proposed use, to follow up on discussions we've had with you at past meetings, including an updated list of the owners, unit owners' rules list, and then move on to focus on engineering updates and landscaping. The, as mentioned, the peer reviewer provided comments on April 19th, which indicated that the main discussion items are those within your discretion. Along with the engineer's letter, I believe, actually, I believe the, the planner has mentioned what we had submitted into the record. I'll note that the revised site plan set, which is dated March 30th, includes an invasive species management plan sheet, an auto turn exhibit, minor grading changes, it adds no parking signs in front of the building, notes trees over six inches, and shows planting on the western side of the site with native grass conservation seed mix as we, um, let's see, the, and there's a stormwater management port, uh, report, which is updated also dated March 30th, with an addendum addressing calculations discussed in the peer reviewer letter, including LID techniques, which you had requested. And, and as the planner mentioned, the, the waiver list, which includes both the site plan review waivers and the LID waivers that are being requested. The, just, I guess, quickly to review, the, the, there's five waivers, three under site plan review and two under LID. One is the, a waiver under 17413B10A from the requirement that the landscape plan show a reduction, uh, that, excuse me, from plantings consisting of one tree per linear, forty linear feet of plant length, and, except for one tree per twenty linear street planting of budding root nine, and one she, one shrub per three feet. The planting plant, the landscape plan shows the reduction in the quantity of shrubs along Route 9. The next waiver is 17413C, which is a request for a waiver of the 15-foot minimum requirement for the buffer strip. Also, per 17413H, the applicant has requested that four trees, which are, two which are six-inch caliper, and two which are eight-inch caliper, located within 25 feet of Route 9, be removed for access purposes. And then the two LID waiver requests, one is Section 311 of the LID regulations, related to the requirement for hydrologic budget or water balance calculations, and the other Section 3.12 of the LID regulations, a waiver for requirements for, from the, let's see, that one was, I'm sorry, that one is the hydrologic, the earlier one was the water budget. I'll also note that the applicant met with the Conservation Commission on March 30th, and will return there on April 26th. And a peer review letter to CONCOM also indicated no remaining issues on matters before the commission. The engineer can further update you on, on that, if you would like. And I'd now like to hand off to Najah Stratton, to be followed by the civil engineer. And at any point, the team's available for your questions, including those, from those of us who are attending remotely.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm back with one of my PowerPoints. The good news is, they're getting shorter. I think that's good news. This is, will be pretty quick today. I just wanted to, oh, we can go to the next slide, please? It's been a little while since we've had a rendering up, and we've updated them with some of the tree plantings, so I just wanted to start with an image of what we're aiming for, what we're trying to put on the site. If you can go to the next slide, please. Just as a reminder, so there are 32 owned units. They're all interior-facing garages, so most of the onsite activity is happening within the building. Because it'll be car-to-access managed, it sort of naturally slows the flow of traffic in and out of the building, because you have to stop to actually pull in and pull out. And the onsite driveway along the sort of bottom border of the image there means that you can access the first floor and the second floor within the site, and you're not having to go out to the exterior roads in order to travel within the site. If you can go to the next slide, please. And actually, I think you can go, yeah, too. So I know there's been a lot of conversation about traffic. That's sort of been the big conversation we're having about cars in and out, and concerns with Parkerville. So I, none of this is anything that you guys don't know, but I thought it may be worth just taking a step back, because the site has been vacant for 25 years. So we have a little bit of an uphill battle, because we're comparing to a vacant site, which by definition means we're going to be producing a bit more traffic than there currently is. Previously, with the office building and the restaurant, you know, you had up to, a office building that could fit up to, let's say, 45 people, plus a, excuse me, the allergies have been terrible, a 90-seat restaurant, which is going to be a lot more traffic than what we're generating. You know, by right, you could build up to 50,000 square feet of office building, which would be 250 people coming in and out. Which again, is all to say, nothing you don't know, but I think we're fighting a bit of an uphill battle when we're comparing to a vacant site. And so I just wanted to make the point, at least, that I, you know, we have a relatively low usage, low traffic use, and hopefully that is more appealing than other potential uses for the site. Yeah, so the other thing was just with Parkerville Road, I know in particular the concern with people driving up and down Parkerville. The nice thing about our site is that because the units are owned, it's going to be people who will become familiar with the area coming to and from the site. And, you know, driving 20 to 25 miles per hour with speed bumps is probably not the preferred route, once they know how to get there. They're going to be using Route 9, they're going to be sticking to the fast roads to sort of get in and out of the site. So I, you know, we, we will do all the signage, we'll do all the left turn, no left turn, but I think, as I said, it will not be the preferred route, once people get familiar with the site. So we want to go over the rules and regs that we've committed to and updated from last meeting. So no long-term overnight parking, trailers are limited to one night with, we'll sort of set a designated spot, that's not very visible from the road, but just, so it's available. We sort of touched on this last time, but this is not a residential unit, so just clarifying that people cannot be living in their units, no mechanical work in the exterior of the building, no revving of engines, with the right turn only. We're happy to sort of commit to whatever wording you guys are comfortable with, but we had, you know, per the, this is a requirement of the Town of Southborough, we'll be monitoring it via cameras, unit owners are responsible to make sure that their guests know this rule and follow this rule. Last meeting, we talked about restricting the hours for which cars can be delivered to the site. So we were proposing 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM as acceptable hours. These restrictions would also apply if people are trailer and cars back and forth for track days or anything like that, that they can't be delivered off hours. We discussed last time, the parking for events is specifically at 225 Turnpike, so we don't run the risk that people overshoot Turnpike, uh, 225, hoping to park at ours, and then have to deal with turning around. And just that we will be monitoring closely the number of guests and people on site, so if it, if we find that it's, whether it's one particular unit owner, or whatever it is, if the occupancy of the building is getting too high, that we have the right to pull that back a little bit. That's it, that's all I got today.
And I think now we were going to ask the civil engineer to...
Okay.
...to give you some updates.
Good evening.
Thanks, sorry. My name is Dave LaPointe with Beals and Thomas, and tonight, we just wanted to give a little bit of a overview or explanation of the landscaping that we're proposing out here, as well as then tie that into some of the waiver requests that we've submitted. So just for a little bit more clarification, for those of you who may not be landscape or plant people, we put this board together here just to demonstrate what some of the trees and shrubs look like that we're proposing out here. So along the frontage along Route 9, we're proposing some of these deciduous trees here, the red oak and American hornbeam. And then for some flowering trees, this pagoda dogwood here. And then some of the shrubs that we're proposing throughout the site include some deciduous flowering or ornamental shrubs, as well as some broadleaf... or ornamental shrubs, as well as some broadleaf evergreens. Um, just to give a little bit of variety and interest, um, if you look at the landscaping, um, section of the bylaw, it mentions that plantings, oop, excuse me, it says, um, the intent of the landscaping bylaw is to improve the appearance, environment, character, and value of the total community and to protect nearby properties. Um, so in proposing the landscaping that we have here, we think we are accomplishing that, um, uh, directive in the bylaw. As Kathy had mentioned, we are, uh, proposing to remove four existing trees, um, that are within twenty-five feet of a street. Those are primarily, uh, wrong, along route nine right here, there's two six-inch trees and two eight-inch trees, and then there's another one over here, um, that, within that group. And those, we've identified as being, uh, Calery Pears or Pyrrhus Caleriana, uh, which are not native trees to this area, they're actually native to China and Vietnam. But in addition to them not being native, um, part of the site design, as you are aware, we're proposing this access drive along the front side of the building to provide access, um, from the lower entry here, as well as the entry off of route nine into the upper level of the garage. And due to the grading that's required to, uh, to develop that driveway there, the grading along this, uh, frontage along, or between route nine and that driveway would basically mean that those proposed trees would be buried under a, a fair amount of fill. Um, so again, that goes to the, um, waiver request where the, uh, I believe the bylaw states that the board can waive that requirement if it pertains to safety or access. And so, like I said, we're proposing the access off of route nine here to get into the upper level, as well as from the lower level. But the primary thing also being that those trees that are out there, even though they may look nice right now, because if you've gone by there recently, they're covered with flowers and all that, which was what those trees were bred for, was to be an attractive-looking tree, however, they are not native. Um, and I think that's a, a, you know, a directive of the board as well, to use native trees. The, 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 that Calery pear was also known for, um, being weak in terms of the branching, and they often will, in snowstorms or ice storms or whatever, have, have, uh, branches break off. Um, I've seen some, actually, it looks like almost a bomb went off in the middle of it, where the whole branches have just blown apart, basically, fallen off. So they're not likely to last very long. Um, so the intent is to propose new plantings along here, um, to enhance the site using native, uh, plant materials. The other waiver request that we're asking for is a waiver from the fifteen-foot buffer strip. Um, and the reasoning for that is, we just don't have the space along route nine here, or along the frontage. Um, between the size of the building, um, the driveway and the parking, we're just too tied up against the property line. And, uh, which then also ties into the other waiver request that Kathy had mentioned, of putting the trees twenty feet on center, which we have that, but then one, uh, one shrub, I believe it was every three or four feet. Um, and the bylaw actually says preferably not in a line, but grouped. So we do have a group down here, we would have the space, um, but along here, we would be forced to putting them into a straight line. Um, and again, we're trying to avoid, um, something like that that goes against what the, the bylaw says in terms of the design. We do have plantings along the, kind of the foundation edge of the, of the building here to kind of ground that. Um, and overall, uh, like I mentioned, we're obviously improving the, uh, overall look in appearance of the site over what's been there now for twenty-five years. Um, and then just one other thing to mention as well, that was discussed last time, was, um, in this area here, uh, to the west of the building, um, we are proposing a, a native conservation seed mix, um, which will basically create kind of a meadow appearance, um, which is the same seed mix that we're using, where any of those invasive species that are along the backside that are proposed to be removed, uh, that area would be reseeded with that seed mix as well. Um, the other couple of waivers that Kathy had mentioned were the ones related to the LID, uh, bylaw, which one was the, uh, water balance and the other was the, um, hydrogeologic assessment, I believe. And both of those, um, really do not seem, um, relevant, in a sense, in terms of this site. It's a very small site, it's not even two acres, um, we're actually having less impervious area here than what's, um, out there existing, and we're performing, um, or incorporating infiltration into our stormwater design, so we're going to be recharging groundwater. Um, and the, in terms of the, um, water balance, the peak rates of runoff, um, that we've proposed as part of our stormwater management system, um, meet or are less than, again, what's proposed out there under existing conditions, so, um, doesn't really seem to be, um, relevant to go into the other details that those, uh, the LID bylaw, uh, is requesting in terms of precipitation analysis and, and things like that. But that's, uh, kind of an overview of what we're proposing, um, regarding the landscaping and an explanation of the waivers, but we're happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Uh, so before you leave the stage, um, there were two things. So that exhibit board with the plantings-
Uh-huh.
-can you give me a PDF of that?
Sure.
Can you send that to us?
Yep.
Because we have to include that in the meeting minutes, when something is displayed.
Okay.
So that'd be helpful. And then number two, we did receive some feedback from the fire department, um, and I don't think it's an issue, you might have addressed this, but just to confirm, that, um, they, originally in the ZBA permit, there was, um, concern that they would have access along the front of the building-
Mm-hmm.
-because they had thought maybe there was, uh, other parking than the parallel parking. So you're still proposing parallel parking along the tree line, close to the turnpike?
Correct, correct, just parallel parking-
Road.
-along the, the route nine side of the driveway, not up against the building.
Right, and what is the width of the driveway aisle there?
Twenty-four feet.
Okay, because they wanted at least twelve feet, and I believe you showed the truck turning exhibits anyway?
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure that, um, his comments were recognized for tonight. So they were fine with that, as long as they have access along the front?
Yep, okay.
And no, no perpendicular parking along the front?
Nope, nope. And as Kathy had mentioned too, one of the other things we did include along here, which was in the original memo that we got from the fire department, was no parking signs along, in front of the building here, just to-
Yeah, that was another comment, they had that, um, that would be a, you know, a benefit to have that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I think we're, we're set. Um, that's what we had prepared to present, so, um, you know, we're happy to, to answer questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. Very thorough. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, thanks again for coming. Great presentations, uh, across the board. I, I like the, everything you incorporated in the PowerPoint in terms of the rules and everything. Um, that looks, it looks great, gives a much better view, not only to us, but to the town, uh, members, what the, could hap- be happening there, or what the, the rules are. Um, the waiver requests, personally, I don't have any problems with them, the, the fifteen-foot buffer one, especially, I think it's more important that you can have the traffic go back and easily get out along Parkerville and, and turn. Um, and have some of the parking there too, so that you can, um, accommodate guests, um, that, that come and visit. Um, overall parking, I, I know you mentioned that, I mean, I, I know there's, there's a lot of different things that could happen on the lot, but, um, you know, my mindset alone is just, okay, when you do have a big event, what's going to happen, so it doesn't spill out all over the place. Like, I agree, probably ninety-five percent of the time, there's going to be no parking issue, but it's when, you know, a warm sunny weekend, like, or, you know, even a day like this afternoon, on a weekend like that, where people are like, oh, come check out my cars, or, I mean, you can't really coordinate it, so. Um, but overall, I mean, what's, what's been changed and where we've gotten to, I think it looks great. Hmm, I got no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Stein?
So, uh, could you just show, like, point two, the sh- the shrubs, where they are now and where they're going to be removed on the plant?
You mean the trees that are going to be removed?
I could, wasn't there something?
It's, there's, there's four trees that are over six-inch DBH that are within twenty-five feet of a street that we're proposing to remove, that's what we're asking for the waiver from.
It says a reduction, the, the landscape plan shows a reduction in the quantity of shrubs along route nine.
Of what's required. Reduction of what's required.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you're going to be, I know you're, the tree thing I was going to ask next, but-
Okay.
So you're going to, there, there are no shrubs currently, and you are planting shrubs, and you're just asking for fewer shrubs to be planted?
So we're asking for fewer shrubs to be planted, yes. Um, there, I don't really think you could call anything out there really shrubs. There are clearly some trees that are, like I mentioned, the, the, the Calery pears, that are the non-native trees. There's a lot of growth that's along there, that's just not very, you know, attractive. Um, that would be basically just, has grown up over time, I believe, right along this area here. We're proposing to, to clear all that out of there, do the grading of the driveway, and then plant new, uh, trees along here. We do have a cluster here, a grouping of trees with some shrubs, as well as, and we have shrubs along the, um, uh, boundary or, or foundation, if you call it that, along the building here. Um, but the, one of the waivers that we're asking for is the requirement of the one shrub for every three or four feet-
Thanks for clarifying.
-along route nine, that, that's what we're asking for the waiver from doing.
Okay.
Because it asks for it to be grouped together, and there's not really room to group, put groups in there, other than where we've put them down here in the corner.
So then, like, on the northern part, I don't see that you're doing any plantings up there?
We have, we have a few trees right here, on this corner. Um, then along this back edge of the driveway, we're at the twenty-foot no-disturb zone from the Conservation Commission, so we're not proposing to do anything there, other than do the invasive species removal, and then, once that invasive species has all been cleared out of there, planting it with the conservation seed mix.
Um, so regarding water, where does the water go now?
Stormwater?
Yeah.
So the stormwater basically flows across the site and into the wetlands at the backside of the site here, and then it flows through a culvert into a catchb- or, excuse me, a manhole on the other side of Parkerville Road here, and then into a pipe system that goes around, um, the adjacent building here.
So your, your changes in the grading don't impact that water flow?
Um, no, no, we've, our stormwater management system incorporates some, um, infiltration in a system that's, that's adjacent to the building on the west side over here, um, and then it also, um, is collected and ultimately then does, let me flip to the stormwater or the drainage.
Thanks.
So here, it's a little bit hard to see, but you can see this kind of rectangular shape right here, um, that's the subsurface infiltration system right there, that's primarily picking up the roof runoff from the building. And then the other areas of pavement, there are catch basins, there's a catch basin there, catch basin there, um, there's one in the back there. So those areas of pavement are all getting collected, and then that's ultimately getting piped and connecting into that same manhole that's adjacent to Parkerville Road.
Is this all existing currently on the site?
The, the, there is an existing manhole over here that's existing, and catch basins in Parkerville Road, but there's no other drainage system on the site today, no.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is all proposed, as part of this project.
Um, so, pardon my ignorance, but if, if that's true, why would you be requesting waivers for the water balance calc?
Um, so, so you're right, and, and like I mentioned, there were a couple of things in there that we are addressing, in terms of the peak rates of runoff, recharge and so forth, but the annual precipitation, um, evapotranspiration, um, in terms of pre and post-development conditions, as well as then the groundwater elevation, um, pre and post-development conditions for seasonal profile of groundwater elevation, um, velocity and direction of, of ground and surface water flow. Again, we're addressing surface water flow, but not groundwater flow, per se. Um, th- those things, for the scale of this project, those seem to be, um, just somewhat a- above and beyond what would be necessary for something like this, of this scale.
How deep is the groundwater elevation, estimated seasonal? Approximately?
Um, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't, Nate, who's on the, on the call here, may be able to-
Yeah.
...to answer that better than I would. Um, actually, we might have it noted in here somewhere.
Nate Bouts here.
Here's Nate.
Um, so, I can hunt down the soil logs, but we do have the infiltration system with a four-foot offset from the bottom of the system to groundwater, from our test pit data out there, um, to meet that, that groundwater offset, so that, that is, that is shown in the calculations in the stormwater report. Um, and I'd, I'd be happy to pull up the, uh, the soil logs and get that information for you shortly.
So, so if that's, let's see, so here is one of the test pits that was right here, that was at about elevation, um, let me see, three, uh, where are we here? Well, the bottom of stone here says 301, Nate says we're four feet below that, so that would put it at 297, and we're up at, um, three, 303, something like that, so whatever that works out to be. Six, six feet down? Low grade, a below existing grade?
Yep, and, yeah, looking at the test pit data here, we've kind of had varying depths, ranging from, you know, at, at shallowest, four and a half feet, down to almost nine feet to estimated seasonal high groundwater. And also what is helping us is the majority of the site is a fill site, um, so that further puts us in an offset to groundwater.
Okay. Let's see what the other members think. Um, as far as those, the waivers, I, uh, personally don't have any problem with the one, two, or three, I think you've addressed the landscaping-related waivers. Um, I'm still kind of on the fence about four and five, but we'll see what, um, Mimi and, uh, Debbie say about that. As far as the PowerPoint presentation, I just had a couple of quick questions about that. You referenced some speed bumps on Parkerville?
Those like hump things?
Those are the existing speed bumps, because that's a school zone?
Yeah, yeah. No, my point is just it's not a very appealing street to drive on with, you know-
Okay.
-car if you don't need to, that you-
You weren't proposing to add additional speed bumps? Okay.
Not if we do not need to.
Got it. You're basically, so you, the point of referencing the speed bumps on Parkerville is that you feel it's less likely that your, uh, your members of the HOA will be using Parkerville?
Exactly.
I mean, I do, I certainly appreciate your rules and regs and the pledge to mitigate people taking a left turn on part of, and it's a very high priority for the town, that people not, that people take a right turn only, coming, you know, out of your lot.
Sure, and as I said, it makes sense. We get it.
Um, so, the management company, is that you?
Yeah.
You're going to retain that?
That's actually where we come from, our background is property management.
Just out of curiosity, like, the HOA members, the, the owners of the individual units-
Mm-hmm.
-are they going to have, like, a board of any sort, or is it going to be a hundred percent just management-controlled for the duration, per- perpetuity?
So that's a good question. I mean, will, we will be the management company, the sort of incentive that we're selling is the branding and resale value, and all of that comes with keeping us as the management company. So we, ultimately, they could eventually choose to kick us out, because it is a condo, but we're, the point is- but we're, the point is to be branding this and to, you will own a parkhouse unit, and you'll only do that if you keep us as the management company.
Well, so whether or not the owners have any kind of board that's TBD, or?
Yeah, so in terms of the board, they, is your concern that they would change the rules, the condo rules?
Potentially.
Yeah, so, I mean, they, that is a good question. The way that our other, our other property is a little bit different. We own one in Waltham right now that is garages, but is not a parkhouse property, as in, we're selling out and not retaining management. With this one, I think it has to be a little bit TBD, although I'm happy to take some direction on how much authority the board had, the owners have versus the management company has.
So, just to, and like in my, in my business experience, in the mortgage business, we do see HOAs eventually released to the owner's control from the developer's control. But that's to meet like Fannie Mae guidelines. In this case, where it's, I don't know if people are gonna have any, it's certainly not Fannie Mae financing, so it wouldn't have, that was kind of, I don't see any reason, from a marketability standpoint, for you to allow the owners to, you know, take control of this HOA at any point.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, in a residential context, eventually, once the units have been sold, the developer has nothing to do with the development anymore. This is a little bit of a different situation because we'll be operating, there's the social component that we will be running. There's more than just owning real estate. So, I, I don't see an issue with us maintaining the-
That would be helpful.
Yeah, and I, you know, as managers, that makes our lives easier if we do that also.
Thanks. That's it, babe, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stein, Mr. Maria.
Thanks for the presentation, all the information. I had a question on the, a couple of questions for you. The overnight trailer, is that, what did that really mean, one overnight trailer allowed?
Oh, no, so trailers, they're, because the zoning board had asked us to limit overnight outdoor parking. They just said no long-term, which they left a little vague, but just that you couldn't have cars that are just living in the outdoor parking spaces. So, with trailers, we're limiting it to one night. So, if let's say you, you bring your trailer and you drop a car off, and for whatever reason, you can't that day bring the trailer back off-site, we're just limiting, so trailers, again, are not gonna be living in the outdoor parking spaces, but we're giving a little bit of wiggle room in case you can't take it away the same day you drop it off.
Yeah, that makes sense, and, and it would sort of be an unusual occurrence, like, once you're, these are full, you would maybe have some switching out of cars, what happened occasionally. How can you ensure that there's no one going to be like staying in the trailer or running it for heat, or staying overnight? Because truck and vibration noise is sort of becoming a big problem down there. And this is not your, you know, kind of, I don't envision that happening, but just to make sure that, you know, how will that be kind of like, you know, looked after?
These are not like, like trailer home trailers. They're like, if you imagine, I don't know if you've ever seen the vehicles that will transport horses or something? Like, they have the sides, but they don't, they don't run off their own power. They'll be hooked up to some other vehicle that pulls them, so they, in and of themselves, they, they won't be running because they, they just hook up to the car that's carrying trailer around, if that makes sense.
Okay, so it's not a unit that's refrigerated or heated, or it's detached, then it gets detached?
Yeah, exactly. It's just, you know, it wants to protect the cars on six side, but it doesn't need to be temperature-controlled or anything like that.
Thank you.
Correct my format, but you're thinking more like a trailer for carrying a car to like a show, right? So, they want to keep it-
Car carriers, yeah, okay, all right, that's helpful, thank you. I wanted to ask if you thought about electrified parking spaces as part of your plan. Southborough currently doesn't have a requirement for that in our major site plan. The new Department of Energy supplemental goals has that, but I hope to be able to bring something forward to the town one day. But we don't have that requirement for site plan. And just wondered if you have people coming that might be wanting to come in their Teslas and see their other cars, if you're thinking about having any EV charging for them?
So, this building's a little bit unusual because the interior of the building is parking spaces also. So, for sure, all of the units will be able to be hooked up with EV charging stations within the units. I think, I don't envision a need for just the 16 gas spaces to necessarily need charging units, but I, part of our, you know, figuring out the power requirements and all of that for the interior units, for sure, is to be able to charge cars within the units.
Oh, okay, that's good, thank you. Where do you, first of all, do you have, like, are they called tenants? People that have the cars there, or the cars, the tenant? The owner, okay. Do you have owners lined up?
We are working on it. We are, very, very early days. It's been a little bit of a funny balance of like, I haven't really had anything to sell yet because we haven't quite gotten the approval to build it, but I also don't want to wait too long to start selling. So, we, you know, we've been talking about this concept for two and a half, three years now, and we have a lot of very interested people, and we are, within the last week or so, really starting to focus on pre-sales. So, if you ask me even two weeks from now, I hope the answer is absolutely. We have deposits where people are ready to go, but it's just been a bit of this balancing act of not selling before I have anything to sell.
Well, and also, I'm wondering, I guess, you know, this is gonna lead into the, my concerns with the traffic, but I am curious to know, you know, are, do you think that these will be people in Massachusetts? In our neighboring towns, coming from Boston? I'm just trying to figure out, I was like, I saw and appreciate that you're calculating how many visitors there could be in 11 cars a day or something like that, but I just wanting to pressure test that a little bit.
Yeah, so, our original goal, when we started looking for sites, we're looking for sites within 30 minutes of some of the Newtons and the Needums and the Wellesleys and the, you know, up 495, some of the communities there. Because I think, this is almost like an ancillary use to your home, right? You have your house and you have your two-car garage there, and you have a collection that you just, or you want to buy a couple more cars and you don't have space in your garage. So, this is somewhere that's not too far from home, but maybe somewhere that has a little bit more space. So, the use case is mostly, these are not necessarily people that are gonna be coming every day, but maybe you're coming once a week, maybe you're coming every other week. Occasionally, they bring a friend to show them their latest car, so it's, yeah, I don't know if that's helpful.
No, that is helpful, no, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. I, I'll, you know, I've said it already, but I, this is a collector road. We have, I don't know if you know this, but we have a couple of situations in town where we've had neighbors who have had to hire attorneys to try to, you know, other businesses that have come into town. We've had court cases, we had the Long Cadillac case on Middle Road. We've had covenants on certain roads, we've had lawsuits. And, and this all has to do with, you know, egress from a commercial property that is not only, you know, going using a residential road, but using a residential road that's also a collector road. So, that means that they're trying to get somewhere, and I'm wondering, where are they going? So, if they're gonna go to, into Boston, they're gonna get on Route 9, and they're gonna get on the Pike, and they're gonna go to Boston. But if they're gonna get over to Sudbury, they're gonna zip through our town, and they're going to want to go into Marlboro the back way. And so, I'm just really trying to, you know, kind of think, think that through because this particular topic, I think, has a lot of areas around town concerned because our neighborhoods are but the commercial industrial properties, right? And I know you're very concerned, and I really appreciate that you've, you know, you've mentioned it to us every time we've met. I, I feel, you know, conflicted about that because I, I don't know if, you know, what if it's not 11 cars, what if there's, you know, a lot more? And, you know, word gets out that Southborough has this new downtown district, and everybody wants to go down there and, you know, see what's happening in Southborough, and then sneak around to Marlboro. And now, we have a problem, we can't stop it. And I think that, you know, I feel like my role is to, you know, work through that with you. I don't really see the need for the egress on, onto the road. I mean, I know that you're, you have it planned that way, but I, I very strongly feel that properties that are zoned commercial and industrial along Route 9 should use the, you know, the state road. It's a state highway and it's meant, it's meant for traffic. And I just want to let you know that, you know, I missed the first meeting and filed the Mullins paper because I had a conflict that night. And I have gone back to the tape several times because I missed the gentleman that called in. I believe he was maybe in a butter right behind this property, but I don't know exactly where he lives. And he said some pretty amazing things, but he had really serious concerns. And I don't know if other neighbors have as well, but, you know, about dogs and children and schools, and just people in the neighborhood who are out. And so, I know that's not what, you know, you're not in the business of that. You don't want to, you know, dump traffic out onto the road, and it doesn't appear that you're going to. But I just want to let you know, I, I think that as a planning board member, I really need to listen to those people because that first gentleman who called in the first night was seriously concerned about egress into the neighborhoods, especially since it's a collector road and it can go across town to other towns. So, just to let you know, but thank you very much.
So, just so I understand, because this, this is a bit new to me, but if you, you know, this was an office building previously, so if, if somebody came in, which I think they can do by right, and built 50,000 square feet of office, what, like, what happens then? How do you, how do you mitigate the traffic? Like, are there other methods, I guess is what I'm asking, that other people use? If they put, you know, buy right properties on places where the neighborhood has concerns about the traffic?
I don't know if I'm the right person to answer that question, to be honest. I'd be having, if it were me, I'd be having the same conversation, to be honest. And I do agree with you that the number of cars and vehicles plays, plays into the whole picture.
Yeah, because the reality is, I, I, I mean, I have two small children, so I get the concern about being near a busy road and about all of that. And the butter, I think this is why we are sort of trying to sort of jump through hoops to say like, we will do everything we possibly can to put all of our people to the right. But like, it's, what, 100 feet from Route 9? Like, there, there are cars that, you know, being in this area and being very close to a busy road, there are some cars that are gonna drive down. And I, I, I wanna be respectful of the concerns and also, like, this is a commercially, it's a commercial plot, and somebody is gonna come in here, even if it's not us, and build something that's gonna produce some amount of traffic. So, how do we sort of be the good neighbors and do what we want to do and respect the concerns? And as I said, I'm happy to, if people have said, here's something we've done that has worked, I'm, I'm really happy to think about it or integrate it in.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know, there's been litigation on several roads in town. And so, I have no idea what's gonna happen, to be honest. But I mean, that's how much people in Southborough care about these, you know, roads, especially the ones around the schools.
Makes sense.
So, through you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add to that, and I know we've said it, but just to reiterate that this, this use has a degree of control over who's using it, you know, more than typical commercial users. You know, they're, they're planning to have a camera, they've told people, you know, you can't do it. They want to, they're, I think the sign that they're planning would say, you know, requirement of the, of the town of Southborough, no left turn, you know. So, I think there's, you know, and coupled with the, you know, low utilization, you know, I think it's a, it's a, it's a situation that has much more control than I think maybe the, the situations that you're describing that people have been upset about. So, so the owner has ways to, to mitigate that and enforce it more than a regular commercial user would, would.
Thank you. Thank you for the rules and regulations update. That's like a lot of the things that we've spoken about at the previous meetings, and I really appreciate that. I'm fine with all the waivers. The landscaping makes sense. Those calorie pear are horrific, as well as being non-native. They're invasive species, like in every state south of us. So, I won't be sad to see them go. The, the waivers for the lid, it looks to me that Fussin' O'Neill was okay with them and said it was, they didn't have an issue and it was up to the, to the planning board. Do you see any issue with those here?
No, and we see this time and time again with this size of a project. I think when you look at the pre and post-development watershed maps, when you look at those and you see what was covered with pavement before and what is the coverage now, this isn't going from a totally wooded site to now a paved area. It's currently paved, and there was a building there. So, when they, when the engineers follow stormwater management policy, they have to show in their stormwater calculations, when they have a site like this, that they're not putting more water off the property, or very minimally more, if that's the case, than there was in the existing conditions. So, if this area was paved, and I want to take your spot here, but if it was paved, right, which it is, the water's still running to the same spots. And in essence, with the underground infiltration system or the detention system that will also be infiltrating, you're saying? And it sounds like the groundwater elevation is lower because there, from the bottom of the detention basin, there's another four feet to the groundwater elevation, which is pretty good. I mean, that's required, but sometimes they have problems where they have to, you know, build above that. So, they're also providing extra infiltration, I think, that way. So, they're not depleting the groundwater supply. So, you're kind of going from an impervious surface to an impervious surface. It's just that with the bigger building, the runoff from the building is considered clean water, whereas if it's more parking area and the cars are on it, which it is like now, that would be dirtier water going into the system.
And then, in regard to Mr. Maria's comments, I think that this use is a relatively low-intensity use, which, you know, what it was, I don't know, 30-something years ago, when it was a restaurant, I would think there would be more traffic on the residential roads there. And I want, did we speak at a previous meeting of like, kind of checking back in a year to make sure, think the traffic's okay, that there haven't been any issues like we do with lighting?
Would believe, I mean, our former chair, Mr. Morris, always would mention that we have the right to revisit our permitting within a calendar year, so we can always check back in.
Yeah, so maybe if there's, you know, any issues, we can get back with you in a year to see if, and I think having the right turn only is very helpful. And I think you've really done a great job in trying to address all our concerns. So, should we vote on waivers, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we, we received the Fussin' O'Neill comments mid, middle of last week. So, I haven't drafted, I haven't done a draft, prepared a draft decision yet. So, I think in the past, the board has voted on the waivers already ahead of time. And then, at the next meeting, prior to the next meeting, I'm hoping to like distribute the conditions, and then, it could be finalized. I don't assume the plans are going to be changed, but there were no, there weren't any comments this evening that would modify the plan. So, those would become your, your final plans that we'll reference in the decision. I'll draft up a decision and, like I said, circulate it and hopefully have it ready for the May 8th meeting so that the board can actually have the conditions in hand and everything's agreed to.
You don't expect Conservation Commission to require any changes in the plan, do you?
I don't believe so. We also received letters from the Conservation Commission peer reviewers, one being Fussin' O'Neill, and they had a similar letter that basically said that they had no further comments. Their wetlands peer reviewer, the only outstanding item that he had had was that we submit the invasive species management plan, which we- invasive species management plan, which we then did, and he, his response to that was that he thought it was appropriate for the project. So I think, so he's all set as well.
Great.
So the meeting on Wednesday night, we expect that to be closed.
But, and if there are any issues from that meeting, then we'll be able to pick it up prior to, you know, you.
Prior to our next.
Yeah, you could revise your drawing and present it and say, here's the small change, and those would become the approved. And then changing the date on the decision is just a minor administrative.
That invasive management's going to be a job. There's some mighty invasives over there.
And I believe Nate from my office sent the landscape exhibit as we've been talking as well, so hopefully you should have that in your email.
Just need it for the minutes.
Yep.
Perfect.
One motion for all.
Can we do one motion for all the waivers or should we do them separately?
So just one motion for reference the list.
Yeah, just reference the list and I, I, um, no, do what you usually do.
Be vague and.
And approve.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the waiver request for 241, 245 Turnpike Road car condos, as requested by the applicant and discussed this evening, April 24th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, it's just 2023. I think I said 24, I was looking at my watch, but the year's 2023.
Very good. You said the wrong date. Perfect. All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Continue with the next.
Just, I don't know if anyone has any comments in the office, in the office, in the hearing room or on Zoom. I forgot to check that before we continue.
So would you be okay with retaining management control and the order of conditions?
We have until May 8th.
We'll have a definite answer to you by then.
So we currently have nine attendees in the waiting room and nobody has their hand raised.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we continue the public hearing for 241, 245 Turnpike Road car condos, major site plan, and for 241, 245 Turnpike Road, special permit, lower impact development, LID for the car condos, two, May 8th, 2023, at 7:05 PM.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, scenic road stone wall removal and rebuilt. Hello.
Good evening. How are you doing? Jim Benincasa.
Good. Karina, do you want to?
Yes.
Bring us up to date on this one?
removal on, at 10 Brigham Street, um, from the Asmath Engineering, James Tetchelt and his company, and owned by Whitney Home Builders, Jim Benincasa, who represents that LLC. The application was filed with the town clerk on April 4th. A legal ad was posted in the paper on April 10th and April 17th. I think I have to read the legal ad, since this is a new public hearing. Just make sure I have the right one. Let me see here. This is it. Okay, so, legal notice, the public hearing notice for scenic road stone wall. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 15(c), the Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 24th, 2023, at 7:10 PM in the McCallif Hearing Room located on the second floor of the Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. 01772, to consider the removal and reconstruction of 60 feet of scenic road stone wall at 10 Brigham Street, which is designated a scenic road in the town of Southborough. The request for stone wall removal was made by Whitney Street Home Builders, LLC, 118 Turnpike Road, Suite 200, Southborough, Mass. 01772. The stone wall is to be rebuilt along the right-of-way boundary and within the right-of-way. Copy of the plans and application can be reviewed at the Southborough Townhouse and Planning Department during normal business hours or on the planning board's webpage at www.southboroughtown.com/PlanningDashboard. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposal should appear at the location and time designated above or can access the meeting remotely at HTT, at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. Sincerely, Mimi Lu Chil, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. Let me just see. Town departments. Yep, we did distribute this application to the town departments in case anybody wanted to comment on it, and we received one comment back from the police department that requested that when you do do the work, if it's approved, that you order a police detail because that road, it's necessary on that road for traffic. So you'd hire a police detail when your contractor does that work. And that's what I have. Do you want, I think they want to present what they want to do.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Welcome back.
I'll just be very brief. Again, this is at 10 Brigham Street, and there's a section of what's in right here, 60 feet of existing stone wall that's on or just within the right-of-way that the, the applicant has a home buyer who wants that stone wall actually to be a little more prominent. Right now, you actually, from the pavement, you drop off, the grade drops off down to that stone wall, and it's actually a very poor stone wall right now. It's not, you know, anything that you look at it and say, wow, this is, you know, this is a drywall so perfect, it almost looks like it was masonry. This is one of those ones that's just kind of a heap of rocks. And so the prospective buyer wants to just replace, again, it's 60 feet of this in place, just make it look nicer. That's, all that's proposed is just, again, replacing where this is in, within the right-of-way. Could you go just a little bit further beyond it to the southeast? And the wall gets actually outside of the right-of-way. So, again, the new buyer wants to replace it in front of him, and it stops essentially, there's another stone wall, if you're out there, this line of ellipse is running this way away from the road, essentially stops pretty much at that point. And Karina can vouch for this, she was out there once before, and she gave her foot in the course of, of confirming the, the location of that wall, or at least gave, took an injury to her foot. So again, that, yeah. So that's all that is before you. And again, we're just here because, as, as the ad says, General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c) says if there's a road that's been designated as a scenic road and you propose to alter a tree or remove stone wall within it, you've got to get a permit from the planning board. So this is why we're here, and we think this is just a, again, it's just a very simple thing, just to actually take this wall, make it a little more prominent, a little better than it is now in place. And we're not proposing to move it, not, you know, forward or back or anything, and just make it a little bit of wall in place.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Thanks. Appreciate you coming before us as, I think, the longest sitting planning board member. I've seen a lot of these, so I'm channeling our, our former chair on this. When I, I say the, the stone walls, I don't, I don't know if, but there's actual a stone in Southborough, it's called Southborough Stone, because it's rounded and it's not chiseled, and like, if you go to the, the old book in town called Fences of Stone, it talks about, there is a designated stone type called Southborough Stone. So, so when, when we talk about stone walls and why we're really protected of, or protective of them, a lot of it has to do with, because a lot of landscapers like those and they, they are very attractive and they, you know, when we're talking about sites, typically we say, okay, if you have a wall, you can, if you're going to break into your lot and everything, you got to keep the stone on site and reuse it and repurpose it on site, you can't sell it. We even said the same thing when we did the golf course and the, the fire department needed to put their new septic system in, that if there are stones that had to stay on the golf course and be used on the golf course, because the stones are very rounded and attractive. So, so I don't mean to be, so I, yeah, geeking out on stone walls. Glad you came.
I live in Southborough, our office is in Southborough, we're building in Southborough, so I like, I love this town, but yeah.
So, um, so hopefully the stones are going to be very similar to what you're using. Are you going to use stones that are on the site currently to, you know, build it up? Are you, like?
We would use what's there, you know, obviously we're going to be coming up a little bit more, ideally, if we could grab some of the other.
To jump in, again, there's this stretch of wall that's running sort of perpendicularly away from the road. All this stone is going to be available to be used.
Okay.
Because this, this wall actually otherwise would just be filled with the driveway and off of the septic system. So in addition to the, unfortunately, you can see in the picture behind you, it's, it's a, it's a very low wall. You can, you can barely discern the tops of the stones there amongst the weeds for most of that. And that's, and that's essentially the problem, is that the, the buyer has, gee, I wanted to have something that looked a little more, a little more pretty, a little more substantial in, in front of the property than that. And the applicant is going to make use of this stone wall running away. We haven't tried to calculate, is, is this alone enough or would he bring in any other pieces, you know? But we are going to make use of the existing wall and, and this wall running away in the course of this.
Right. So that, that's great.
Yeah, would be the goal, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just point out before you continue, because I want to make sure, because it just, it came together to me just now, I was like, wait a second, this is 10 Brigham Street, right? So further down the agenda, we have 6 to 12 Brigham Street A and R. This is one of the lots that will be created from that A and R.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah. So just so you know, just so it's clear.
Yeah. It's, obviously, it's already there, the house is already there, we're just moving lot lines, but, yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, so this is a future lot in the A and R that's coming up. We should have probably done it reverse so that it was clear, but it just dawned on me, I'm like, wait a second, this is that lot.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't think it's a problem. I think at the same time, they're just getting their ducks in a row with trying to get the stone wall ready for when they go to get a building permit.
So we have a building permit on this one currently, the home is there, and then the septic system is near complete.
Well, on the existing lot. It's not this lot configuration.
Correct, correct.
You have a home there that you're going to change, that you haven't sold yet, and you're going to change the lot.
Correct.
Shape.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted you to be clear that it's the same property that we're going to be talking about. Okay. Sorry, Tan.
So the scope of the work is basically removing stones that are there, doing some work on the landscaping, so to speak.
Clean it up and put them back.
What materials, other than the stones, are you going to use?
That's, I mean, I.
I don't, I don't think any.
You're just going to basically put the stones back after it's cleaned up?
Yeah, we would like to come up a little bit higher, though.
With like a loam or something?
Yeah, like build a wall, and actually build a wall to make it look nicer, you know.
They probably would take some of these stones, if there's a, for instance, if there's a sort of a base stone, that's a big stone that's rounded and really hard to build on top of, they might move some of them out or, or reshoot, or take the ones next to it out, whatever's necessary. We get the good, the good Portuguese guys who do all the drywalls.
Right.
In there and, and shape it so that it's, it's stable.
But it, so it's not really, it's not removing it, it's just removing it very temporarily to clean up the area and then putting all the stones back.
Cleaning up the area and then putting it all back, yeah.
And then supplementing it with more.
Much nicer, yeah.
Stones from the same site.
Yes, yes.
So that's.
The person that's, that's moving there obviously wants to make it look nicer, you know, that was one of their concerns, buying the house, is can we clean this front up a little bit, which obviously brought us here.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Just make sure they know, if they then augment it again, they have to come back again.
Okay.
Mr. Maria?
I love the conversations on stone, so I think we can talk about this all night. But no, thank you. I, I just, if you can show me on the map where the, the A and R is going to be, just so that I can understand. Is that on your map?
Sure, well, the A and R is, is going to create officially, and finally, this, this is the lot in question, that the A and R makes to be the boundaries of number 10. And the A and R makes this the boundaries of number 10, and I can trace some of number eight that is behind it, goes over here, and then it trans, goes all the way over to the edge of the property to a property behind, to property off Main Street.
We have it up on the screen.
Oh, yep, there you go.
And then the 60 feet is the complete frontage for 10?
60 feet is the portion where the wall would be replaced.
Okay.
This 10 actually has from here all the way over to here on this 20-scale plan, so this is probably 300 feet or, or more. But there's only, there's no wall in front of this, and it wouldn't, even if there was, we would leave it alone because there's, there's no, you know, house here. And again, once you get past a point over here, you're, the wall goes out of the right-of-way. So we're just asking to replace 60 feet of stone wall where it's within the right-of-way and replace it in the same location without, you know, moving its base or, you know, one way or the other.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. So, um, so this will be a drywall, that's been mentioned before, but just to make sure it's not.
Correct, this, this isn't to be mortared at all.
No mortar, okay, good. And while we're here, do you want to just do the A and R now?
If you don't mind, right. That's ideal, yeah.
So, um, first, do we need to make a motion to approve the rebuilding of this wall?
So moved.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion?
As per the last one, should we have to ask if there's audience comment or?
Oh, yes, we do. Thank you. Anyone in the audience? Anyone?
No virulently opposed to stone wall parties?
We currently have seven attendees in the waiting room for Zoom, and there's no hands raised and nobody in person.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we close the public hearing for 10 Brigham Street.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Madam Chair, I remake the motion to approve the stone wall replacement or removal and replacement as requested by the applicant for 10 Brigham Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, do you want to move on to the A and R?
One-stop shopping.
Right.
So the planning board received an A and R application for 6 to 12 Brigham Street and filed it with the town clerk on, at, on April 20th, 2023. I reviewed the A and R during the previous weeks and revisions were made, so the plan was reviewed by me and checked, and we checked the deed references, et cetera, and they made all the changes that we requested, and it appears to be in order.
So that's not it?
This is, this is the, this is not the A and R plan, but these are the A and R boundaries, as shown on the plan behind you. And I would just add. as shown on the plan behind you. And I would just add, just quickly, that if, in case you have any question, you know, you see notation of riverfront area and about wetlands. We have an order of conditions for these lots as shown on the A and R plan. So the A and R plan is the last sort of step of the official process to be completed. And just, and again, just so you know, it's not, there's not an open question as to whether the commission would approve the lots and grading as proposed. They already have.
Right. So if you recall, previously there was an A and R. It's down there. You just have, Andrew, can you pass that down? I just want to refer to the date on that. No, it's the old one, the one in your hand. Thank you. So on, on February 22nd of 2021, the planning board endorsed an A and R of this same property where the lots were long and thin, going from the back to the front. And there were four lots that were there. So what the applicant has done is reconfigured the lots instead of being long and thin. They've made a wider lot that's shallower and left a larger lot to the rear, as you can see on the A and R on the screen.
And the applicant is essentially, as I guess you'd say, given up on getting one of, of those four lots. We've done, you know, we did soil testing and again, there are wetlands issues, wetlands resource areas on site.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, he had hoped to gain all the possible lots on that previous A and R, but it really just is not possible. And that's a part of this last A and R, the one that you have before, for you that we're asking for approval tonight, is recognizing that and saying, okay, that's not going to happen. We'll give all that land to, you know, this, this house here.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear for the board members.
Mr. Mills?
I have no questions.
Mr. Stein?
No questions.
Mr. Maria?
No questions either.
And I have no questions either.
I'm chair. Make a motion. We approve the A and R for six to 12 Brigham Street as requested by the applicant.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll get that A and R signed this evening and an endorsement form. And then if it's all set, I'll call you and let you know. I'll give you an email.
All right. Thank you, board. Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 4042 Central Street. This is the opening of a public hearing. Karina?
Can I make a motion for a two-minute recess?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Awesome. We're back. So Karina was going to update us on the opening of the public hearing for 4042 Central Street, the Southborough Historical Society.
So this is a legal notice for the public hearing for major site plan approval, 40 to 42 Central Street, assessors map 38, parcels 44 and 45. Per section 174-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, April 24th, 2023, at 7:15 PM in the McCall of Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, to consider the application from Southborough Historical Society regarding the property located at 40 to 42 Central Street for major site plan approval. The hearing concerns a proposal to renovate the historic Fayetteville Village Hall into the new home of the Southborough Historical Society and Arts Center, including the parking area and related infrastructure. This site is located in the Residence B zoning district. A copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage at www.southbrowntown.com/planing-board or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting can do so in person or via Zoom remote participation by going online to www.southbrowntown.com/remote-meetings. Mimi Latrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. So to give you a quick rundown of where we are, let's see. On March 17th, we received a submission from the Southborough Housing Historical Society, represented by Mr. Michael Wei Shin, who's here tonight, and also member Sally Waters is here from, also a member of the Southborough Historical Society. Let's see here. April 4th, we filed the application with the town clerk and a legal ad was also filed with the town clerk. It was posted in the newspaper for April 10th and April 17th for the public hearing to open this evening. The submission was sent to Fussin O'Neil for review. We are currently awaiting feedback from Fussin O'Neil, review comments. They have indicated to me that they will have them before the next planning board meeting and hopefully in time for you to respond to them. The submission was sent to the planning board and to town departments for comments. We received one email from the Southborough Public Access Committee. Let me just pull that up here real quick. And they said, thank you for this information. This was addressed from William Signs, the chair of that committee. Without additional, it's difficult to determine if the space meets ADA 521 CMR standards or exemptions have been applied for with the State of Mass Architectural Access Board. I suggest that the building inspector examine the structure and report on compliance. So usually that's handled during the building permit application and the building commissioner. But just to make you aware that they want to just make sure it's accessible. Sorry. In the interim, I supplied the applicant with a review letter indicating a completeness of the application because there were some items that I felt were missing. And I know that they've been working on them. So upon meeting with town council, prior to accepting the application, we felt it best to get the ball rolling and open the public hearing and that the planning board could work these things out with the applicant during the public hearing if, based on the checklist and the review comments that I had provided and how they have responded. We did receive green cards back. I believe most of them came back in. Yep, we got most of them. So thanks, Sally, for taking care of that while Michael was out on vacation. And that brings us to this evening. This is public hearing number one, and that's what I have for the update.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. Do you have a presentation or?
Oh, I might also just mention while you're setting up that I did receive some feedback from Conservation Agent Melissa Danza indicating that there is a stormwater management permit existing.
Yes.
And that you may be addressing that with an amendment possibly at the upcoming, or it's a discussion item on the upcoming Conservation Commission meeting.
Yes, for this Wednesday.
For this coming Wednesday. So we'll find out more of how they proceed as well.
I spoke with Melissa about this. They thought that this would be an administrative change. It has to do mostly with the reduction of the asphalt surface and possible transition to gravel. But that was, that's the only issue. They didn't seem to feel there was going to be much of a problem.
Okay. So we'll find out their final determination after their meeting. It's, it's on Wednesday, right? On, at?
Yes.
The 26th. Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
So I don't have a presentation. I'm here essentially to answer your questions.
Okay. Do you want to start by addressing Karina's letter of April 5th?
Sure. So, Karina, you want to talk about the letter our attorney's provided, or do you want me to do that?
Oh, yes. I'm all, I'm sorry. It was such a crazy day today. So we also received a letter from, let me just call it up here. Just want to make sure I'm reading the right thing. Here it is. Okay. So we also received via email a letter from attorney Eric Rusel?
Russell.
Russell, who's representing the Southborough Historical Society.
Historical Society.
Correct. Dated April 19th, regarding 40 to 42 Central Street, major site plan application proposed Fayetteville Village History and Arts Center. And in it, it describes more of the operations and what's going to happen there and also speaks to the Dover Amendment and the proposed use and utilization under an educational application there. And some of the things refer to, for example, like the stormwater management calculations, which I feel should be provided based on the change because the current stormwater permit is based on the prior permitting from 2019 when an auction house was proposed that were performed, that was prepared by Peter Bemis. So there's some information there that I felt we still needed to get. And so we're also waiting to hear how the conservation speaks to that. But I know that with major site plan approval and anything related to the parking lot or parking is, or touches the parking is under the planning board's jurisdiction according to town council. So I felt that because of that advice, that stormwater calc's related to the parking lot, even though it's, you know, you had it before, but you're changing the surface and some things are changing and there's less pavement in some areas and then you have walkways in others. And there are ADA spaces now being proposed asphalt and you have a little pavement around the drain and the catch basin. I felt that, you know, it is important that we have stormwater calc's to make sure that there's no puddling water flowing off the site, making sure you meet all the stormwater policies. And again, you know, Mimi and I met with town council to discuss the planning board's jurisdiction under the Dover Amendment application, you know, if they're applying that to this project. And he was very, I don't know how to say it. He was very clear that anything, absolutely anything related to the parking that touches it, meaning stormwater calc's, parking spaces, numbers, et cetera, anything related to that is jurisdictional. So I felt you have to have that information in order to opine on it and to have it vetted through third-party engineering consultant to make sure that everything works right so that you don't have any low spots, any water running out of the driveway, et cetera. You don't want issues later. And it's kind of a, a standard step for most projects, that you're not causing any off-site issues based on any changes to the site. So that letter from attorney Russell, you know, speaks to several things. He explains, you know, application of the Dover Amendment and also the operations, which is some of the things that we asked for. Town council also opined to us that. Town council also opined to us that, um, in accepting, in, in an application like this, it's well under the planning board's purview to ask for information that supports the fact that this is truly a Dover Amendment application. And even though the bar usually is pretty low, that you have to demonstrate you're in educational use, et cetera, um, the planning board still has a right to ask for that to be explained and, you know, kind of proven that this application meets that. And I think that part of this letter responded to some of that. And then, um, I also had a copy of the Articles of Organization. And I didn't read through it thoroughly and I'm not an attorney, but it also, um, outlines, there's a statement in there that says, um, educational, um, I can't remember off the top of my head and I have it here, but it does imply educational use. So usually they want to have a dominant, um, it's supposed to be a dominant or main use when you have a Dover Amendment. But again, um, town council talisman indicated those, that those bars are usually relatively low, um, when it comes to the state for, um, educational use or whatever the Dover Amendment applies to. However, there is case law that discusses a whole range of how these projects end up and transpire because they're so varied, you know what I mean? And whether it's a ball field or a parking lot or, um, in addition to the building, the case law is so, it's out there. So those are the types of things we have to rely on, um, or the planning board has to, so. That's my long sentence, sorry. I'm trying to stop doing that.
Okay.
And maybe Mike, Michael, if you, Michael, if you just explain the site a little bit and how maybe it's different from the last time they saw it, it would help them.
Surely, surely. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Is that on?
It's on. It's just one of those microphones you have to be way down here to use. Um, I'll just put it up here. Um, so essentially this plan is exactly the same as what was proposed and approved back in two thousand and nineteen under John Delapiscoli. The only difference to it essentially is that the entrance on Grove Street has been eliminated and returned to green space. There was originally a drive-through across the back. Um, yep, yep, down there, right there, mm-hmm. Um, and the handicapped accessible area, which by the way was addressed and approved by the building commissioner, um, we've gone through huge expense to make this building ADA compliant, including a two hundred thousand dollar elevator. So, uh, the handicap ramp and parking spaces are, uh, in now in the rear of the building as opposed to stretching down along the side. The only other change, uh, is that the driveway cutout remains where it was, um, both for aesthetics and cost reasons that for some reason had been moved closer to the building. I believe because Mr. Delapiscoli wanted to have a, uh, access, drivable access to the basement for art storage under the previous plan. So we, in order to save funds and simply because it made sense aesthetically, uh, left it there. We're also proposing a gravel parking space, which is what would be appropriate historically. Um, we also think it's much more environmentally sensitive in terms of both groundwater runoff and, um, and usage. It's been gravel all this time. Uh, it has been, uh, well, it's been gravel since the house there was, it used to be two lots, the house was demolished, uh, near the railroad tracks probably in the nineties somewhere. Uh, so that's, that's really it. The septic remains the same, the overall footage remains the same, the building remains the same, there's no new construction to the exterior, the front remains the same. Um, the landscape is proposed simply to be grass, uh, again, because this building sat in an open field historically, um, and that's what it was made to look like. It has a very low, the, the shingling comes down relatively low, uh, to the base, which, um, if you've passed by, you'll see has all rotted out. We found out this week that all the sills had to be replaced around the building. Um, it's been a, it's been a very interesting process. Uh, this building was, turns out was actually next to falling down. Um, very close, termites, I mean, let's, let's face it, if there is, could be a problem with this building, it's, it has had it. It had three feet of water in it the day after Christmas, I think I-
Indoor swimming pool.
Indoor swimming pool, yeah. Uh, yep, we could have had a whole auditorium for Southborough. Um, uh, there's major structural issues, the thing is bowed out on the sides, so it's requiring major, uh, essentially the whole spine of it has to be replaced. Um, you know, essentially, uh, yeah, it's, this is an example of historic preservation, but from a planning perspective, um, that's what we're proposing. Um, I just want to say for the record that we are appealing to you under the Dover Amendment not to try to evade, uh, oversight of the planning board in particular. This is purely a cost-driven issue for us. Um, just to get to where we've gotten today, um, our, the previous engineer under Mr. Delapiscoli abandoned this project and did not wish to undertake it, so we had to re-engineer this site at our cost. Um, we are close to twenty thousand dollars into this process already, which is half of what the windows in the entire building cost. So we are trying to eliminate, uh, costs where we can without compromising the aesthetics of the building, without compromising the historical nature of the building, um, and try to keep this as simple, as simple as possible. So, um, this is why, uh, the attorney has argued that the stormwater calculations are not a reasonable demand under the Dover Amendment. There's two parts to Dover Amendment. Um, one is the discretionary areas that it allows, but it also that ominous word reasonable, which has been the subject of infinite interpretation. Um, there is an established legal precedent that reasonable implies financial obligations, uh, that there can be some, there has to be some reasonable nature to advance this, uh, and not put improper or onerous financial obligations on the proposing organization. Um, to redo these stormwater calculations is another eight to ten thousand dollar expense, um, for something that was just done previously, um, for the previously approved project. So, um, uh, according to the attorney's perspective, that is not an acceptable, uh, demand under Dover and he argues to you as to why that is. So, um, I don't know, I, I'm saying I'm not an attorney, but that is, um, their interpretation. Um, so, uh, that's the overall project. Um, we've delineated, uh, in the, in Eric Russell's letter, uh, more about the hours of operation, what we're planning to do by and large is, uh, provide a home for the Historical Society, provide, uh, an arts and education space, um, uh, in conjunction with the Southborough Arts Council, who has been homeless essentially for the last, uh, number of years. Um, we met with them and they're very excited about doing, uh, projects with us. And then, uh, upper space, which will be primarily displayed for our use on the second floor, but will be occasionally open for public, uh, rental and use for small functions. So that's in it, in a nutshell. Is that what, uh, is that what you wanted me to say?
I think it's a good start because we haven't seen this since two thousand nineteen. You know, the planning board hasn't when they saw the prior permit, so it's good to get some orientation.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you. Um, so from the, the plantings and everything, I mean, the last time we saw this, there were going to be roses all over, all gone, is that right?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, and how about the flagpole, is that?
Well, historically, there was a flagpole on this building, um, and, uh, current plans do actually call for it to be restored, I believe, there in the architectural plans. Um, we're not going to light it, uh, as it was, I think, part of the previous discussion, you know, for a long time about whether it could have uplighting or not.
You're going to leave the flag out all the time because I believe-
We're not flying our flag. We're not going to fly the United States, we're going to fly the Historical Society flag. I think we've had enough flag problems in town. We're going to fly other flags. Um, yeah, uh, so, the, again, uh, it was a very ornate planting, uh, which was the subject of a lot of discussion. Um, the, the gem of this property is the building. Um, even in its now in its reduced state, you can see what was intended. It was a barn-like structure sitting in a field and for something that is going to be primarily of historical use, restoring it, and we have many pictures of it historically, when it was used as a field hospital after the first pandemic, um, with the tents, the army tents on the field, there's no plantings around it at all. I mean, it would be appropriate to plant it if you wanted it to, but we don't want to. And besides which, we don't have the budget left over, um, simply because, again, with all these unexpected expenses of this, you know, high groundwater of the state of rot and, and problems with the structure of this building, you know, we're already at our limit of what we can do. So, um, we're fine to finish this, but, you know, we, we can't keep piling on additional expenses is the short answer.
So for the, the water that's, you said at Christmas time was all in the basement, is that all being re-diverted and?
Yeah, that's under the current building and, and stormwater plans. Essentially what happened was they came in, um, it was quite a sight to see, they came in, um, essentially got access through the Grove Street, got a small excavator, um, through the old bulkhead, dug down into the basement about six feet, removed all of that soil, replaced it with fifty thousand dollars worth of gravel and a tile drainage system, which was articulated under the previous plan and approved by the Conservation Commission. So the glory of this now is the groundwater, which is very high here, surprisingly because it's on a hill, but now actually flows by gravity down into this diversion area, down into the base as was delineated by the, by the plan. You can't see it here because of course this is pre-construction. Uh, but it's, it's a marvel of engineering and will keep the building going forever, but it, it was one of those things that had to be done on a cost basis because of the uncertainties in doing it and engineering it. So it was a very much an unanticipated, uh, expense to mitigate the water to, to the degree. I mean, who would have thought three feet of water in that building?
Are you still doing the exterior in composite instead of real wood shingles or is it real wood shingle?
Uh, no, the, it's going to be actually shingles, um, and unlike in this picture where this, the asphalt comes down onto the gambrel, um, the shingling will be restored to its original appearance, which was both the, the vertical wall and the, this, the above, whatever, we're going to base of the gambrel there. So all you'll see on top of this is the, uh, slate-like asphalt shingles on the very top and the flip side will have solar, um, which is almost unseen by anyone, um, coming down the street because of the way the plantings and things are done. See, it's just totally hidden, which should pay environmentally, this building should actually have a zero carbon cost is what it's intended to do.
Now the, the trim on the windows, is there going to be real wood or is it acetec?
Uh, you know, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, most of it is actually real wood. The base stuff will definitely be composite, which is then now the new historical standard for historical buildings. Um, we used to call it AZAC, but it, there are now other, uh, brand names and composites and we're definitely going down to that road because A, it's indistinguishable from wood and B, we obviously have water and insect problems in this building.
Thank you for what, um, Fussin O'Neil comes back with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Stein.
So this was approved previously, uh, under adaptive reuse, I believe? And there was really detailed, uh, plans and presentations about the exterior and how that fit into adaptive reuse. Are we going to delve into any of that?
Um, I do believe, uh, respectfully, that that is all exempted by the Dover Amendment, so the answer would be no, the short answer.
Well, so this is just site plan because the, uh, use is allowed by right, it's not an adaptive reuse.
Okay. Um, you know, the thing about the Dover Amendment, I'm always probably the, the hardest board member about the Dover Amendment use and any institution that's come before us that's used it, I've been very, you know, cautious about, um, you know, I'm, I'm probably the most resistant and I've, in this case, this is, you know, you guys are not a school. So the invoking of the Dover Amendment to me personally, I feel is questionable. It would kind of open the door for all sorts of different proponents to come in and say, "Well, we're teaching classes, so therefore the Dover Amendment."
I think-
Is it my concern?
I do, I do, and as someone who has advocated against this repeatedly at town meeting and constraints and pilot payments on this, um, sitting on the other side of this table, I can tell you this is a very powerful thing. Um, it essentially exempts the planning board from almost all considerations on these properties. Lighting, illumination, landscape, architecture, boom, gone. Um, I think it's overly broad. I mean, here we're using it for cost purposes because I didn't, I've been, you know, as the former chair of the Historical Commission, I think you can trust me to make sure this building is going to be, uh, historically appropriate. But I agree with you, but I will also say that this letter, uh, that was requested by town council, uh, determining our status as an educational institution and the appropriateness under Dover is pretty thorough. It's about four pages of citations of text. So, um, again, I'm not an attorney, but, uh, that question was rightly raised by Karina and town council and we, you know, paid a decent sum of money to answer it.
And, yeah, no, they, I understand the position, I'm just not sure that I agree with that.
Um, you know, morally, I don't necessarily know that I agree either, but, uh, the fact of the matter is that is the law in the books and, um, for us and its invocation here is purely cost, cost.
Right, so I, I feel like, I mean, you and I can go back and forth all night, let's just-
Okay, we'll agree to disagree.
Right, I, 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 I feel like we're going down a very slippery slope here and, well, before, you know, we go further with the Dover Amendment discussion, I would highly recommend town council come attend and participate, um, or just, you know, or will just not have me as a vote, basically.
So, um, we, Karina did request town council, it was approved by, um, Mark Purple and we have not heard from town council to do a workshop on Dover.
Well, I mean, in this case especially where it's not a school, so now we're just basically, you know, saying-
Yeah.
Anybody can teach classes and have-
So-
Use the Dover Amendment to do anything, unfortunately, and I can, you don't have to tell me that it's because of cost purposes and-
Well, no, I-
But it, but it is very, it is very broad and Karina and I did talk to town council and he, um, he concurred that the Dover Amendment is very broad.
Right.
What was laid out in the Articles of Organization and what, um, the attorney put forth pretty much, you know, qualifies them.
I guess I'll be sleeping on that one.
Anything else, Mr. Stein?
Um, I gue, I mean, I, anything I ask, I, I guess the Dover Amendment is going to be the answer, so I guess that's it for me for now.
Mr. Murray?
Well, I'd love to talk about Dover, but I really want to ask you about the windows. Are the windows, the panes, original or old in the structure? Do you plan to try to keep them if they are?
No, they're not, they're actually already gone out of the building.
Okay.
Um, they were all vinyl replacement windows. Um, as a matter of fact, this building lost its certification for the National Historical Register because the town put in replacement windows back in the day. So, um, we have ordered, um, almost fifty thousand dollars worth of, uh, not fully articulated panes, but very, the second to the top high end of Anderson windows. So they will have exteriors that are, uh, in exactly as you see, well, not exactly as you see here because this, this has been altered from the original. Um, there's, the, these doors were inserted and the windows were inserted, so the architectural plans that we've published already and that you have will show, will show that it will be restored to what we think is closer to the original appearance of this building. Um, but they will be the best quality windows we can afford to put in that building because essentially the three components of this building are its, uh, wide front entrance, its windows and its shingles. I mean, architecturally, that's all, that's it. So, um, we spent a lot of time on this issue and a lot- So, we spent a lot of time on this issue, and a lot of our budget is going into this.
Thanks. I just wanted to point out for the board, just to read that the, under the Articles of Organization, I think that we all, we all got it, we all read it, and the very, the purpose for which the corporation was formed is to study. That's the very, that's the first two words, collect, preserve, goes on and on. Before I got your letter, by the way, from the attorney, I, you know, tried to do my own research on this stuff, and some of the things that I highlighted were that, you know, education is a broad and comprehensive term, I think that your attorney said the same thing, and that, that the, it must be, to qualify for Dover must be educationally significant, which, you know, I think that's the thing we can talk about all day long. But, that the educationally significant goal must be the primary dominant purpose. And I read a bunch of different cases, and you can, you know, kind of get lost in this. And the one I found really most interesting was Boston Symphony versus City of Boston. And so, I think when you start reading some of this case law, and you find out, like, trying to understand the boundaries of what, what is educational, and it could be an educational facility that opens up a nursing home, and things like this, you start to realize, and I believe firmly that this falls into the Dover Amendment. And so, I just want to let you know that I agree with Town Council, so that's nice. But, I think we're talking about Dover Amendment here. I would also ask, though, that if you let us know along the way what you plan to do, where you know, we don't have jurisdiction, but so, for example, if you're planning for dark sky lighting, or something like that, that you could, you know, just let us know. So, even though that's not our jurisdiction under Dover, it would be interesting to know, are you planning to do something like that? Because I think as a planning board, these things have been put into place, because this is the thing that we would like to see in some of our projects. So, even though it's, it's not required, you know, will you be doing any of, any of those things?
Can I ask a question, please? So, what is to stop a proponent from simply developing some aspect of their business or organization in, you know, fashioning it as educational? So, for example, the, the proponent who came in here with the car condos, they could teach classes on automobile history and automobile--
They'd have to create a nonprofit.
Let's say they did. Let's say they did, and they, that was their strategy to essentially circumvent zoning and planning. What's to, if we go down this path, we're opening the door to, you know, basically losing the entire purpose of the planning board, which is to look out for the town's interests for private enterprise usage?
Well, we're not private, we're, we're a public United States charity, so, and we were founded in 1965, the year--
Excuse me, but you're, you're, you're not part, you're, this, when I say public, I'm talking about the town of Southborough.
Well, in order to--
You're not, you're not, you're not a part of the town of Southborough, right?
No, no, certainly not.
Okay.
You know, we are a private, public charity, I mean, as all charities are. But, I don't, I don't think your concern is really that valid in a sense that, in order to do this, you have to run a viable nonprofit. And there's no possible way to do this as a nonprofit and make it profitable enough to do this. I'm glad you see what I'm saying, I mean, it's not like, there's no financial incentive to run a building like this. I mean, you can, you can, I mean, our financial projections barely allow enough money to find staff. So, I don't think that people are going to be breaking down the doors to do this kind of, to, first of all, funding a nonprofit, not the easiest thing in the world to do. Secondarily, then you need to have a whole history of educational use, which is demonstrated under Dover. I think one of the test cases was about someone who wanted to open a dance studio, for instance, and decided that was covered by the Dover Amendment. That level of resistance, that was not approved under Dover, because it was an incidental use, there was no history, there was no past. So, I think you have to have a series of tests in this, in these institutions, that would have an established educational history, that have an established purpose, that are registered this way, and that are essentially nonprofits. So, there's just not a lot of us out there. I mean, in Southborough are, well, we have Fay School, St. Mark's, Harvard University and its various things, and the churches.
Southborough Open Land Foundation.
And Southborough Open Land Foundation, but you're not building anything, are you?
No.
No. So, I mean, there's just not a lot. I don't, I, you know, I don't think there's going to be any sort of runaway incentive to try to do something like this by anybody else.
I appreciate--
Maybe they'd like Fayetteville Hall. They can try, they can have Fayetteville Hall. Oh, good grief.
No, thanks for sharing your opinion on that.
Okay, I'm going to move past that and address some of the issues that were brought up by the town planner. So, in our code under parking, it says that parking has to be paved unless the planning board determines that drainage, erosion, siltation, dust, and appearance will be satisfactory controlled. How, how do we know that without any drainage, stormwater, any type of--
Well--
--calculations?
So, there seems to be, and again, I am not an attorney, but in trying to figure this out, there seems to be a very gray area about what, when Dover talks about reasonable regulations for parking, the interpretation that has generally been given is things like spacers, usage, traffic, not necessarily surfaces, drainwater. And if you look at the carve-out, I mean, I think that would be helpful is to take a look, I believe, I sent to you, Mimi, the, and Karina, the carve-out that the town of Framingham uses for Dover, and the planning board there, and--
Right. That's, that's their regulations based on their site plan review, which has nothing to do with us.
Well, no, but what is, I'm saying is that as a planning board, they have exempted all of those type of things, and said that--
So, good for them.
Well, I'm just saying, I, you know, what--
I mean, that's, that's Framingham, and site plan is not part of the zoning act in Massachusetts, so it's unique to each town. Each town has their own site plan review. So, whatever Framingham does with theirs and their regulations has nothing to do with Southborough.
I just bring it up as an example.
So, the reason that this is in here is that the parking lot, as it was prior to the Historical Society taking over the building, had huge puddles and muddy, and we don't want that being dragged out onto the, to the roads, and that, and I think that that is definitely within an interest of the town.
Um, well, Mimi, it wasn't a parking lot, it was just a construction site. I mean, they ripped down the house, they never actually installed any sort of, that, you know, the town--
So, but how do we know what you're installing? There's nothing on the plans that, that says gravel.
Uh, there are now, I believe that was requested, and I believe it's on the plans that we just showed here. We've addressed all of the, the individual points that Karina asked for, the, and engineering things that were not labeled or were labeled, we've addressed them. I have the revised plans here, but was instructed not to submit them yet because there may be additional things, and obviously, producing these planning sets is not cheap.
Okay. So, we can, so, that's why I asked you to address this letter when we started, so we don't have a duplication of effort here. So, has that been addressed? Number three?
Let me find the letter. Uh, two was addressed by the attorney, three was addressed.
Okay.
Four is subject of further discussion.
I just, I, not to interrupt, I think we should just go a little slower on these items, not super slow, but like, three is partially addressed, so I, I still think it warrants the stormwater calcs. As mentioned there, you know, what was provided, and I appreciate what the engineer was trying to help you with, but what was provided initially was a letter, a one-page letter or so, describing how the prior stormwater calculations applied to this, and the fact that since there was lesser pervious, impervious surfaces, that we should accept that calculation, and also because Conservation had accepted that stormwater management, as part of the stormwater management permit. But I feel that with the changes that are happening, and especially you describing how there's high groundwater there, right? So, I understand that, and it causes, but, you know, some very important steps will help protect you, will help protect your project, also helps protect the town, and has the planning board ability to vet a project like this. And one of the key things to site plan is stormwater management. And it's not that we want to make you do extra things, it's--
Except, except that there's already a stormwater management plan in place under Conservation permit, and I think that's one of the things the attorney addresses. This is an actively, active site for that purpose, and in fact, those improvements have all been made. And so, the, you know, in terms of, you know, what we're just talking about, what's left is essentially potential runoff from any paved surfaces or non-paved surfaces, and what we're proposing is impermeable, because A, I think it's much more environmentally friendly. I, frankly, I would hope that no one would prefer to see a gigantic asphalt lot there, as opposed to gravel.
No, but in fact, that when, when you have a more impervious surface, your resulting drainage retention or whatever was proposed with the paved surface could be dramatically less, which would require you to do less basin area, et cetera. So, it's kind of a trade-off, and I think that because the, what was, what you see was existing, you had grass and you had some paving, and then the prior permit, which, you know, to the planning board is kind of null and void, there was a paved parking area, and that's what those stormwater calcs were based on, this paved parking area. You had paving around the building, now you have grass proposed there with some walkways. So, there's not a clear understanding of where it is, I don't think, where, where it's really showing what you, what the stormwater management is with what you're actually proposing to make sure that it works.
It, it just seems to me common sense to think that, you know, removing from an asphalt surface to a gravel surface is not, is going to improve runoff. I mean, it's just--
Yeah, you would think, but there's also, like, gravel surfaces change.
Well, grading, and where is it going, and, you know--
Yeah, but that's all, again, so, obviously, this is way out of my can, but this is already the subject of the Conservation Commission permit. This whole business of the stormwater--
Yeah.
--has already been approved, and is under a functioning permit. So, what the attorney is arguing is that you do not have jurisdiction on this.
We actually do, Michael, because in the site plan approval section, 174-10, right, under major site plan, there's a list of the things that need to be shown on site plans.
Yes, but under Dover, I don't think you actually do--
It doesn't do--
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't think you do. And that's what this, that's what this communication from the attorney is about, who actually also happens to be a member of the zoning board of another community. So, I mean, they're, Croquetis and Bluestein are one of the preeminent firms for advising non, small nonprofits, and they do a lot of this type of stuff with Dover. So, I can only take them at their word when they say that is not a jurisdictional thing.
And Town Council has opined to the planning board via--
Well, I think he should probably then reply formally, if that is actually his--
Probably.
--opining.
Well, I just wanted--
I have dis, you know, I, you know, I, I know our Town Council, and, you know, big R, little r, you know, I, I would then like a formal reply to that, because that's a, another $10,000 hit to this project, to do something that, A, we don't think is jurisdictional, and B, doesn't really advance the, the process here.
And having been an engineer, just last thing I'm going to say, because it's up to the, but that's really steep cost for stormwater management for this size project, especially because, and I don't speak for your engineer, because maybe his rates are different, but especially because a stormwater application is already submitted, and there's a lot of information that can be utilized.
Well, that's what I thought, but, and frankly, what we would have liked to have done, and what we anticipated doing, was simply roll that over into this, you know, because it had already been done.
Okay.
You know, frankly, you know, what we thought we were doing was actually helpful to this process, in the sense that this is far less structure, it's far less parking lot, it's, you know, we could have actually just built what was previously there and presumably used those calculations, but then came up the issue, the fact that they weren't stamped by the, you know, the engineer of record. So that, and then the engineer of record refused to work with this because of a spat that he's had with Mr. Della Briscoli, you know, so we got stuck in the middle of this process. So, you know, maybe we can, to go through some of this other part of the list, maybe we can set that aside.
So, the responses you're reading, are those off the ones you sent me today, or?
Yes.
Okay, so the planning board, we just got that today. So, when you say it's addressed, the, I haven't looked fully at the plan there.
Okay, that's the stuff I sent you on Friday?
That's why I maybe, yeah.
Okay, yes.
So, I, I don't, yeah, on Friday, yeah. So, I just want you to be clear that Michael did submit, like, an interim revised plan, highlighting some of these issues that he felt was--
Well, that's why I said to go, oh, go through it quickly and see what--
Yeah, but we don't have that in front, just so you know, it's in the Dropbox, but it's not printed here.
Okay.
This is part of the actual application, the first submission, so that would be picked up in the second revised submission. Just, just so you know, because Michael's reading responses to something you don't see on this paper.
Okay.
On my comment list, that's all.
All right. All right.
So, do you still want me to go down this--
So, so, number three, you said you have addressed, but I'm, I'm hearing some pushback--
Well, we, we, we just, we, yes, we disagree. And if Town Council wants to officially opine that he thinks that is not the case--
So, so my question is, how can the planning board determine that, that a non-paved service, surface will work without any information on it?
Again, I would argue that what the attorney is telling us is that you don't have jurisdiction over this.
Over parking?
Over this element of parking.
Well, I, okay, so, we'll move on.
Again, you know, I, I hate to, I'm sorry to be the test case for small Dover amendments in this town, because it's been very expensive for us, and I would like not to be here. And I don't like arguing with you folks, because, you know, I've been a huge supporter of planning and planning board throughout my 30 years here. So, this kind of pains me, frankly, but I need to try to hold the line on this stuff so that we don't go down to do duplicative things that we don't need to do legally, that's all. I'm just trying to get to the, you know, to the, the nitty-gritty of this.
So, existing conditions, Plan Number Four?
The existing conditions Plan, again, which is what we've just been talking about, has been decided by our attorneys as non-jurisdictional. Karina feels very strongly that it is, I, I don't have the answer to that, again, not as legal professional.
Because, so, so the plans that we have show the trees that have all been removed.
Yes.
So, they're on the plans now, shown as existing, but they're not, gone.
That was revised in the rest of these things, which were either Scrivener's errors or things like six, the locust, the, the wrong address, the cover locust, layout identification needs to drive to driveway service, the engineer has gone back, I resubmitted these on Friday and addressed, had them addressed. The attorney addressed whatever that they addressed legally, and then the engineer addressed the rest of these issues, by changing or indicating what is correct on the, on the plan set.
Okay, so number five, the plan set has been correctly numbered.
Revised, yes.
Number six, you no longer have the townhouse as your address.
Exactly.
Seven, the locust has been--
Clarified?
Clarified.
Eight--
Eight.
--has been clarified?
Nine.
Has been clarified.
Ten.
Has been clarified. Again, lighting is non-jurisdictional, but we are attempting to formalize whatever, the, the previous plans had, like, major Kmart-level parking light. We're trying to figure out what, what is required for public safety. It's a very bright site already, it's obviously, it's on Central Street, it's under, under those bright sodium lights. So-- So we would like to do as little lighting as possible, both for a cost factor and also just for pure aesthetics. Again, the building wasn't lit. So at the moment, we do not have plans for any additional site lighting other than what is required on the ADA ramp and lights on the doorway of the architectural light on the door, the back door and the front door of the building.
Okay. Are those lights dark sky compliant?
I don't know, but I can find out. I don't think they've actually been chosen yet. They would most likely be historical, you know, we're talking small historical fixtures that point down, you know, those, you know, what do you call them? Barn lights or whatever that point downward.
Pointing down is a good sign?
Pointing down, yeah, pointing down. You know, you know what I'm talking about with a bowl, with a bulb, you know, that hangs on a hook, you know, thing, yeah. I mean, just the traditional. We don't have any views of the building in the back that show lighting at all. And obviously, when it was built, I mean, they were just barely electrified, so.
So in, no light in the parking lot? I would think if you're having nighttime events, there'd have to be some light in the parking lot for safety.
You know, that is a question that we have not fully answered simply because, again, it's on this brightly lit site with no intervening foliage, with no intervening anything to block whatever would be blocking the actual streetlight. So the question was whether or not, you know, I think we need to, I need to talk again more to the engineer about what, you know, what we can do that's not A, terribly costly and B, meets the security requirements of people, if it's not a met already. I don't know, maybe they just do a lumen survey of the area and see how bright it is.
But you, it can't be at the mercy of the town light if it flickers on and off.
What's a street light?
I know, but there's one on my street that flickers, has been flickering for three years. Some go on, some go off.
Really? Not on Central Street, but?
It can't be at the mercy of that for, when you talk about like safety issues. I mean.
Well, it's unclear, you know, where the.
You're going to have a liability issue there.
Well, potentially. But again, historically, there, it's been a parking lot all this time and there's been no lighting.
Yeah, I can't look at it.
Right, you're, you're talking about in the past. And you look at the past, the town, why the building's in disrepair as it is is because it wasn't maintained and it didn't go through like all the steps and like drainage and all this stuff that we're talking about now. I mean, part of this, I know it's putting you in a difficult spot, but at the same time, and I view this in the long run, is really making sure we're preserving the site and the building for perpetuity.
I agree. So can I just propose this, I'm sure this will be continued anyway, that we just table this discussion for now and I'll get some more information about the lighting? I don't have the answer, is the short answer.
All right, I just have a couple more questions. How will the individual parking spaces be identified?
I don't believe that they will be identified. It'll be if they're gravel.
Okay, so they need to be somehow?
They do?
With segmented bumper strips or other similar permanent means?
Okay, let me get back to you on that. I don't have the answer to that.
And there's no signage shown for the deeded parking spaces?
So I sent you the language of this deeded parking spaces. It's our intention to go back to the Board of Selectmen to try to get clarification on the language of this. It was written in a way that makes it absolutely non-enforceable. It requires signage, but it doesn't say where. The spaces are assignable by us, but it doesn't say exactly, you know, it says eight, but then another four, and they could be used sometimes, and then they all can be closed, you know, depending on uses of the building. So my, and I spoke to Kathy Cook about this three or four months ago, and I brought up the fact, you know, speaking of what you're speaking of, Andrew, about liability. I said, you know, this has been written in such a way that mandates public access to private property without any liability waiver. So one of the things I do want to talk to the Board of Selectmen is, you know, what, what liability waiver is extended to us in providing these parking spaces, which we're all for, by the way. We want to be a good neighbor and we think, frankly, think a lot of these people who are coming to the park might actually come and visit us. So we're all happy about this. But, you know, what happens if grandma falls down and is injured in this parking lot from using the park? And are we legally liable for that?
So, but, Michael, what's before us now is a deed that says there are 12 deeded parking spaces that have to?
Yes, and their, and their location is at our discretion.
Well, 12 of, or eight a budding Central Street and four at your discretion.
No, I don't believe there's any language for a budding Central Street at all. I think there's just eight spaces and four additional spaces, eight to be marked. I'd have to go back and look at the language maybe, but it's, it's, it's very unclear. I do think this is something, I mean, we're all for providing these spaces. However, we need some further clarification from the town as to how they extend their insurance or liability coverage to us for public use of this space. Because otherwise, it's a taking, essentially.
Well, so there were two lots that were sold for $21,000, and that was one of the stipulations. Certainly, they could have been sold for a lot more on the open market.
You know, I don't know anyone else who would have taken on this building, frankly.
Well, no, they wouldn't take on the building, but just the land.
Well, and again, I don't necessarily know that you could have done new, new perks on this land either. I mean, I don't know, that's all speculation. The fact of the matter is, we are not unopposed to doing these parking spaces. We just need further guarantees from the town that if someone, and my concern is mainly liability.
Okay, so I completely understand, except for what's before us is what's in the deed now. If you're going to have some conversation with the select board to amend the deed, then that needs to come before us now because this is what we have to deal with now.
Well, I mean, in the meantime, you know, we can put up, it says something vague reference about marked spaces. I mean, they could be eight little signs. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we're not going to be there, open to the public at this rate, I don't know, anywhere in 2023. So this is a moot issue for now because there's.
Well, hopefully, this site plan will be approved sometime in 2023.
That would be lovely. As, you know, our holding.
And we have to deal with what we have for us.
Well, again, again, though, one wonders whether this is jurisdictional for this business with a deed, but, you know, putting that aside for the moment. Also remember too, it is our incentive to try to get this out of the planning board as quickly as possible because we are paying huge holding costs on this building. The insurance alone on a vacant site building like this is $1,000 a month. So, you know, it is our, our intention to do everything we possibly can to make all parties happy as fast as possible.
That sounds like a good plan.
I'll do my best.
So there are landscaping requirements within parking, but you're not going to provide any trees?
Not to my knowledge, no. Again, this is this gray area of what this parking, you know, what is the extension of parking jurisdiction under Dover?
So according to our town council, it's anything that touches parking. And there are specific parking landscaping requirements.
I can only refer to, to what our council has said, that that is not actually the case. And that this has been adjudicated on several issues and it is actually not as overarching as he seems to feel it is. But again, I'm, I'm just the messenger.
Okay, that's, that's what I have for now. Anything else?
I have one thing. I'm still trying to figure out the drainage calculation thing, and I'm actually on the fence. I do think it's somewhat unreasonable to request it. And I'm swayed by the attorney. I'd like to take some time before next meeting, anyway, to go back. But he cites a couple of cases, one's trustees of Boston College versus City of Newton, and having to do with exactly this. And.
An unpaved parking lot when paving is required?
No, I'm sorry, drainage, drainage, and whether drainage is required for parking. And there's, so he cites two, you know, cases where one is Newton, one is Wellesley, where drainage was, you know, not considered part of a Dover protected use. So, I mean, I read the case law because this stuff is so complicated and this is really one, I think it's somewhat complicated. It's not really cut and dry, right? I mean, they're all pretty complicated in my mind because I'm not an attorney. But I think from what I understand is the more litigation there is, the more we understand what the boundaries are. And we might not agree with it, but those are the boundaries. So there's two cases that are cited here by their attorney. And I would very much like to know, what does the town, town council say to this? And is there, and, you know, does he have another case that he's thinking about that puts drainage squarely into parking?
Debbie, can I ask, in looking at those cases?
Number 29, yeah.
Yeah, did, sometimes there are existing paved parking areas and they're not changing that and the drainage doesn't change? And they may be asked to provide drainage calculation? I don't know if that's that, but that would be something we should be aware of if, what is the existing condition and what they're changing it to? If they're just restriping, then you may not require drainage calculations because you have a functioning system.
I just want to assure the board that I can assure you that we are not intending to be the test case for this here in Southborough, nor do we intend to litigate any of this. At the end of the day, if you tell us that you're not going to let us out of jail without doing these drainage calculations, we're going to have to do them. But that's $10,000 of charitable contributions up in smoke. So I would appeal to you to make sure that whatever you require us to do has the lightest hand possible. Because we literally are taking features from this building and trading them out. We do not have the budget to accumulate, to keep taking these continued hits that we've taken from the existing structure. So whatever we take from pile A means we take something else from pile B. There's some feature of this building that is being eliminated. So I would just ask for your forbearance when we, when we do this. But we're not litigating this with you at all. But I would like to get to the base of this because when we first came, we said, it was told, we were told we had to do all of this stuff. And as time has gone on, there's been a rollback, 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 rollback as this has been more thoroughly investigated because this is a new something for Southborough. But that being said, you know, we will do it in the end. I just, you know, please don't make us spend $10,000 of charitable contributions if we don't have to.
Well, let's see if, what Fussin O'Neill says and see if they think that we can determine whether the gravel parking lot will be satisfactorily controlled without any information. But, you know, I understand your position. Our position is that we are elected by the residents of town to make sure that the zoning code, which was voted in by the legislative body, is adhered to in all projects in town. So we've got a balancing act to make sure that what you're proposing actually works. All right, are there any? You have something else, Mr. Mills?
I was going to continue.
Oh, I just want to make sure that, is there anybody in the audience or anybody in Zoom land that has any question or comment?
We have eight attendees in Zoom, no hands raised.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for 40 and 42 Central Street History and Arts Center, Major Site Plan Approval, two, May 8th, 2023, at 7:10 PM.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question on what, how, with the composition of the board going forward for that meeting. So.
It's only major site.
If, just hypothetically, we were not, didn't end up voting at the next meeting for approval, what, how does the composition of the board impact this agenda item?
It's only site plan, so we only need three.
Three, correct?
Correct.
So, okay.
So no one, no one can miss any meetings. Marnie's signing a mullins on this, so she can't miss anymore.
So whoever was elected to fill the seat would have no ability to vote, correct?
Unless they were to re-advertise.
Right, best case scenario, we have now four members.
Correct.
One of whom is likely to file a mullins.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to put it all out there. Thank you.
Any more questions? Latrell, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Karina, this is the revised plan set. Would you like a copy of this? This is with additions?
Yeah, the one that you sent.
Yeah, this is the printed out version of it.
Yeah, that would be helpful, so I can look at it, too.
Okay, yeah, please, thank you. Thank you, everyone, good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Michael, thanks Sally, too, for your help.
Madam Chair.
Owen, Michael? The, the deed says contiguous to Central Street, not a budding. I had the wrong word.
Yeah, and what does contiguous to Central Street mean in a deed? Yeah, well, we'll get this resolved, we will get this resolved. I have no question. And we are looking forward to having the people there for the parking. So, anyway, good night, thank you.
Madam Chair, due a family issue, I was hoping to depart for the discussion items.
Okay, Mr. Mills, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck to you and your father.
I missed you already.
Next item on the agenda is Chestnut Meadows Subdivision Covenant Extension Bond Reduction?
Yes, and can you elevate George Connors as panelist? And I'm going to pull the button. We should do, we have to continue 206. I think Andrew should, Andrew should still be, should I call him back? No, we can continue with three, it's a minor site plan. So we just need to continue.
I'm sorry, I missed a spot on the agenda here. The next item is the discussion item, 206 Turnpike Road, Minor Site Plan Approval. And they have?
Yeah, they requested to continue without testimony to the May 8th, 2023 Planning Board. Yes.
Mr. Stein?
So the motion is to continue the minor site plan approval for 206 Turnpike Road to?
May 8th, May 8th, there's no time.
It's not a handle, we don't need a time.
May 8th, time TBD.
Yes, on the agenda.
My second?
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Very good, thank you. Now, the next item on the agenda, Chestnut Meadows Subdivision Covenant Extension Bond Reduction.
Hi, my name is George Connors. I represent HABITEC on the Chestnut Meadows Project. They're dealing with that and, and the Chestnut Meadows Realty Trust. They have currently a bond in place with you, good through January 25th, 2024, which I believe Karina has a copy of about a month ago. In the interim, we have requested that Fussin O'Neill do a reevaluation of the work completed there for a different amount on the bond. Currently, the bond is at $410,800. Fussin O'Neill's new estimate brings it down to $322, $368 for a difference of about $118,000. We would like to be able to come back with a revised. We would like to be able to come back with a revised bond amount at your next meeting pending your approval of Fussin O'Neill's review and estimate, which we agree with.
Very good. Do we have Fussin O'Neill's review?
Yes, we do, but I think George is asking that they come back for the bond reduction portion of it. So George, you have a copy of the Fussin O'Neill Bond Review and you still have to review it, are there any concerns with it? Do you want to address all that at a future meeting regarding?
No, I actually had a chance to review it in the last hour or so. Prising, but no, it's fine. The numbers are high, they're higher than Mass Highway, but we're not going to dispute that at this particular time because I don't think you'd listen to us. So, we're happy with $322,368 and we would be able to bring that to you at the next meeting.
Okay, so you want to move ahead with a vote on the bond reduction?
If you feel comfortable with that, yes.
So, just to update the board, Fussin O'Neill provided a bond reduction review. So they went out into the, to the site, I believe it was April 11th timeframe. They did a review and they found that the remaining items to be built still, to be constructed, came to the approximately $322,000 and that included a contingency, a 20% contingency and then also an 8.4% inflation rate, which they, I spoke to the senior level engineer at Fussin O'Neill to confirm that was appropriate. We had used that also on a prior bond recently for St. Mark's School as well. So it seemed to be sufficient, consistent, that's the word. Thanks. So we have that bond reduction. And then also the covenant extension for the additional two years. And I can tell you that Fussin O'Neill had done interim inspections, more so at the beginning of construction when a lot of the roadway work was done and the drainage basins and the drainage system was installed. The project has, the subdivision has progressed with consistently occurring building permit applications and construction of the homes. I believe there's two, two houses left to be built out of the 12 lots. And if you recall, there were two open space lots there originally that were set aside for three years from start of construction, which have now defaulted back to the developer since the town didn't opt their first right of refusal to purchase. So we haven't received complaints of the project. They've addressed everything during building permit applications that we've requested them to supply. So I think they need some more time, right, George, to complete a couple of the houses?
Correct, yes, we think those will be done for the upcoming, the next year, 2024. And as you know, the bond is extended through that period of time, January 2024.
Right.
And who's that at the appropriate time if we're not done. But we do feel this summer and fall that we'll be able to close it out.
Then why are you asking for two years?
That's your engineer's estimate on the 8.4%. Our bond confirmed through January 25th, 2024. So basically a little under a year. Your engineer has gone for 8.4% on your updated estimate for two years, so 16.8 total.
Oh, George, also in your, when George Gallagher sent his request letter for a covenant extension, he did ask for a two-year period, for an additional two-year period in his request letter.
Okay, I do not have that.
Okay, it was a two sentence.
If you agree to that, I will get you an additional bond confirmation through 2025.
So I can tell you that on a yearly basis, Habitat has provided us with renewed bond, performance bond information that we keep on file and that's how we know every year that the bond is carried over. So it keeps continuing every year until they're done with the work. And they support, you know, they show that, they prove that.
Okay.
So, we're, I don't understand a two-year extension. We're not.
For the covenant. Right, that's what, yeah. I'm just making sure that's what we're talking about, the covenant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what's the point, what are you saying?
Well, that's what the applicant.
I just said, there's, I don't understand a two-year extension.
Oh, that's.
What is the reason that they need a two-year extension? If they're just, he just said that they're going to be wrapping up the project in the next, what, George, eight months?
We do anticipate, yeah, we hope to get the final payment done.
So why don't we just do a 12-month extension?
That's fine, too.
I think because the original, George Gallagher, who represents Habitat, the developer, had requested to, an additional two-year period when he made this request. I don't think George was privy to that. He was basing it on that the, there was a two-year inflation rate calculated into the bond.
Correct.
So when Fussin O'Neill did the bond, he did, they did a two-year inflation rate.
So you're saying that if we accept that dollar amount, we have to give two years?
You don't have to do either. It just makes sense to keep it all aligned and.
Why don't we just take the dollar amount and give them one year?
We could do that too, if they agree to that.
Yeah, we just don't have any.
It's just not what was asked for in the letter. So it's, if you, if there's an agreement made between them and the planning board, the bond, we can just vote, you can vote and we'll adjust the bond to be one year of inflation rate. And it's easy enough to adjust because that's the end of the estimate. You know, I mean, we already have a total, we just have to change that one year at 8.4% amount instead of two.
Correct.
And then George would speak for the applicant, for the owner, for the developer, that he agrees to that and then you have that. It can go either way. Unless George has.
Covenant is, at this particular point where there's a bond in place, the covenant is of little value whatsoever as a legal matter. Covenant usually is that you cannot construct houses until you get road in place or partially in place and secured for the completion. Covenant really doesn't matter at this stage. But procedural thing and we follow it so that all the paperwork is there. The issue is bond in place and it is through January 24th and the value of the security, which we'd like to get reduced. And you've got a two-year inflation on it, which is fine with us.
So would you be okay with extending the covenant for a year then?
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, George, what, why, why hasn't the project been completed?
Based on sales, I believe, and I think they're moving right along. It's kind of a moderately high-end project. Something they pay a great deal of attention to detail.
Okay.
And as you may know, in Fussin O'Neill's review of the work product out there in their estimate, they do say that it's generally a neat and tidy site. There's very few little, little things that have been done that have work required, such as a few missing stones, a sign is missing, just minor stuff. A piece of damaged curbing, overgrown vegetation. That's to be expected. And that's really why you don't final pave the road and not see the site up before you start pulling house lots and load equipment on the road and stuff like that, so it's, it's the process.
So is the motion to?
Do you have any questions, Mr. Maria?
Oh, no, no questions, thank you.
So, Mr. Stein.
So the motion is to, I'll maybe split it into two different things. To extend the covenant for the Chestnut Meadows Subdivision for a 12-month period.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes?
And the subsequent motion would be to approve the bond reduction to the Fussin O'Neill suggested figure of $322,368 for the completion of Dairy Farm Lane.
Is that the new calculated amount?
It is.
So could you just read that one more time, three?
Sure, 322, 368.
And that's the bottom line total, including one-year inflation?
That is the bottom line total, including a two-year inflation. But we are going to use that figure
Anyway.
For this purpose, yes.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the old bond. I was like, where did?
Second.
The motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Connors.
Good night, thank you.
Bye.
Next item, discussion, MBTA Communities Input Outreach Path Forward. Oh, where's, how do I keep missing stuff? Oh, Barn Hollow, sorry. Discussion Barn Hollow Subdivision Release 2014 Bond to Town $5,000.
Okay, just to give you a really quick update of how we got here. In 2014, there was a bond reduction on Barn Hollow Subdivision, which is Barn Lane. And the remaining bond of $5,000 was left in place. And in doing research in the old files, actually upon Brendan Holmes, Leslie Carey, who works for Brendan Holmes, she's the trustee of the Fisher Road Realty Trust from which the bond was given for $5,000. So there was an area of open space that was supposed to be hydroseed or hydroseated or aerated and received some wild meadow seeding back in 2014 by, I believe it was May, May 31st or May 1st. I have to look at the document, hold on. I'm jumping ahead of myself here.
Or May of 2014.
May of 2014. Which has passed. So when I, so Leslie Carey has been contacting me and the Treasurer, Brian Ballantyne, over the last two years or so to find out what's been going on with this bond. And we picked it up, we started looking and then it got shelved again. And then Leslie would call me again or, or the Treasurer again and we start looking at it again and then we shelved it. So finally, we completed the research and stopped putting it on the back burner and found that there was a letter back in September 17th, 2013 from Brendan Holmes that said that they would agree to a $5,000 bond if the required work was not in place by May 1st. So then we looked a little further and there was actually a performance bond secured by deposit agreement signed by Leslie Carey as trustee of Fisher Road Realty Trust. And in that it says that, referencing a plan, that the work, the condition of this obligation is that the trust and or its successors and such shall fully and satisfactorily hydraulically aerate and overseed with wildflowers any presently existing disturbed areas in that certain parcel of land in Southborough shown as open space in the Barn Hollow Subdivision, all on or before May 14th of 2014. If they do that work, then this obligation shall be void and the sum of $5,000 will be returned to the undersigned, which was the trustee. If such work is not performed by said date, such sum shall become and be be the sole property of said town of Southborough as liquidated damages and the trust shall have no further obligation with respect to the performance of such work. So Leslie Carey looked through all their files that they had in history and she found no invoices that showed that that work had ever been done. So I went to the Treasurer and we spoke about this and we kind of agreed or he, he he supported the idea that these funds should be released by the planning board because the bank requires a vote by the planning board to release the funds because it was part of a subdivision. But it doesn't say in the agreement where it goes. So the bank has also told Leslie Carey that after a certain amount of time, these funds get released back as lost property to the state. So we said, we better act on this quick because we don't have a lot of time for that because they've already been notifying Brendan Properties quite a while. So the money would go back into the general fund if the planning board votes to release the bond. So, you know, I had updated Freddie Gillespie as part of the Open Space Preservation Commission and Melissa Danza at Conservation because they're usually involved in these properties and I want to make sure there weren't any conservation issues left. So Melissa said there were no issues on her part there. And Freddie provided an email today outlining that, you know, she would really like to see that money go back to an environmental type of project and not just to the general fund. When I spoke to the Treasurer, he indicated that to take money out of the general fund has to go before annual town meeting. Hence, some of the suggestions that Freddie had about the planning board possibly requesting, you know, sending a letter to the select board requesting that if these funds are deposited back to the town, that they get earmarked for something like that. So Freddie couldn't be here tonight, so I forwarded her email to you. And again, this is, you know, speaking as an individual because she hasn't passed this by the commission yet. But those were the suggestions she made. I just feel like it's important that we don't lose this money back to the state because it'd be much more difficult to get it back. And it's been out there so long and the agreement clearly says to go back to the town for liquidated damages. So if we get the money back, then we can resolve somehow an avenue of maybe getting that earmarked for something by, you know, through the Treasurer and the Select Board. Sorry, one long sentence, again.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Yeah, so I would just like to take the opportunity to thank Freddie Gillespie for, you know, her consistency and her diligence and her thorough approach to all town matters. So in this instance, I agree with our town planner and that action is warranted. But I certainly appreciate where Ms. Gillespie is coming from and I hope that the money does eventually go to good use by the town.
Mr. Maria?
I have no comments.
Okay. Yeah, so I see this like as a two-step. First step, the planning board can vote to release the funds back to the town. And then second step, not necessarily tonight, but think about what, what project we can utilize those funds or perhaps ask that it be transferred into the tree maintenance fund or?
As a town meeting.
Yeah.
So, shall I?
Sure.
So the motion is to approve the. So the motion is to approve the, the release of the 2014 bond to, to the town in the amount of $5,000.
My second?
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Okay, now is it MBTA Communities?
So I'll just, we'll provide, we'll prepare a notice of vote and file it with the town clerk, and then provide it to the treasurer and to Leslie Carey, the trustee of that trust.
Okay, I just wanted to, so we had the joint meeting with the select board, CHOPC, and a member of advisory. And there were a lot of good ideas, but that didn't really, there wasn't a singular route. And then Colleen and I attended a meeting put on by CHAPA, which is, was one of our grants for public outreach. And they recommend that you start with public outreach. Like first education, you know, what this statute is and what, what it means for Southborough. Just so everybody is aware of this and understands it. And then do charrettes or something to try and get some input to see where people in town are thinking about where these districts could go. And, and then move from there. And not to make any decisions before you've done your public outreach. So I was thinking, perhaps in May, do a couple of the, you know, forums for just educational, what, what this is and what it means to Southborough. And then not do anything in the summer because no one's around. And then in the fall, maybe pick up and try and get some public input on what people are thinking.
So from a timeframe perspective, timeline perspective, we would be thinking about when the public hearings would have to start in order for annual town meeting? And wouldn't that be about November? December, maybe, at the latest?
We typically have the public hearings like two months before, so if it's March...
Just two months?
We've been starting them in like January.
But...
They've been working out that way.
Is that, we started the, the very first...
The downtown district was different.
The downtown district was different. I see, it does depend somewhat on the...
The topic.
The agenda item. And for this, we might want to start it a little earlier.
Good point.
Given the, I mean, like, the way that that meeting went with the joint boards, to me, sort of indicates that there's a really wide spectrum of opinions. And you have some people saying, well, we need to do this, you know, in the spirit of the state, you know, directive. And then you have people saying, well, how can we best, you know, set us, ourselves up to be, you know, as close to compliant as possible? So I think that we should probably plan on, I think, starting the public hearings around November.
So more aggressive schedule?
I would suggest doing the outreach and kind of deciding that during it.
Right.
Just because the, you don't necessarily, when you have the public hearing, you want to have it pretty much together. You know, yes, changes can make, can be made, but the more input we get, the better. That's the biggest thing, is just to get the input first. We should really start doing that as soon as possible. And then, you know, even mailings, informational mailings we can do over the summer without actually having to get together. Just get people thinking about it.
So where are we going to have these forums?
Well, we've had them in various places in the past, Senior Center, wherever it's available. I think the Senior Center is the most likely.
And would somebody from the state come out?
Yes. We have, so the woman that we've been dealing with is, her name is Lily Link from CHAPA, and she's our public engagement helper. And they will facilitate a meeting so that it's not one of us kind of looking like we're backing something. They will set up a meeting, they will give us information pamphlets, flyers. And, and...
And they'll do the presentation?
They'll do the presentation. We obviously have to organize that and let them know ahead of time. But they have these presentations out there. And, you know, they can give us the supplies and the information to get it out there. We just need to start seeing what this community has to say.
So they do more than the cohorts?
Oh, yeah.
Those are just the regional gather, meetings so that everybody gets to hear what everyone's doing?
Exactly.
Okay.
How many will they do?
There's no, there's nothing in writing. It just said that they will help our engagement. And also, there was, there was a list of different ways. And in-person was one of them. Facilitating a meeting was another. Information sessions.
So it just, like, it would seem that there's going to be a number of municipalities, majority of the municipalities are going to be going through this process all at the same time.
175.
So the resources of the state, I mean, they're not infinite, right? To facilitate these types of meetings.
Well, she has about, I'm sorry, she has about, I think it's about 14 communities that we have in the cohort.
Oh, okay. So she's assigned to 14 towns?
Well, she's got other cohorts too. So we meet, the 14 communities meet once a month, and then she's got other ones that meet once a month. But she has one each week. So, but she also has help. She's not, you know, doing this alone. So we just have to sort of figure out what we want to do, and we'll figure out how she can help us do it.
So maybe we need to roll through the summer.
We could have, you know, we have this new, next, I think tomorrow starts the training on the new website. And with that, we could have sort of news flashes with information that we can put on the homepage and just change it up every so often, maybe put some comments in there. And, you know, just keep the, the information flowing so people are always thinking about it. And then, you know, after they think about it, they're not thinking in the meeting. Do you know what I'm saying?
So maybe, I, I thought you did a good job at the joint meeting as far as having the takeaway being that we're going to do our mandate, so to speak, our directive, and just continue regardless of what the select board, the capital planning, whatever their approaches are to this. We're going to do our part as far as, like we would with any other zoning overlay district, right? Do you agree with that path? Or I just want to make sure that at least the three of us are all on the same page as far as going in that direction.
Yeah, I agree. I have to say, I was surprised too. Even within some of the boards that night, there were...
Leave the mic.
That night, within the boards, there were sort of differing opinions, I think. Yeah, we have to do what we have to do.
Okay.
And we have to make it work. I mean, I have some questions. I'm sure everybody has some questions about how to make it work, but I think that's what we'll do.
It was interesting. I don't know if you, if that got sent out to everybody, but Lexington just passed their zoning.
They passed it already?
Yeah.
They were part of a pilot, I think.
And they have 15% affordable.
Wow. It would be interesting to see, do we have access to the district that they did?
Yeah, actually, yes, because...
Yeah, Vanessa sent out the...
Vanessa sent us the whole Warren article.
I think I forwarded. Look in your email.
You did?
I did. I sent it.
It's funny, in the Warren article...
It was probably buried in a bunch of information.
The Warren article says 15% affordable requirement unless the state... Says 15. Then 10. But I guess it said in that, the article, that the, the state approved the 15.
Would it be inappropriate for us to put that map in our packet? In our, like, Dropbox? Just, I'd just be curious to see, I mean, I'm familiar with Lexington. I'm curious to see what they did for a map.
I think the email's in there. Let me look.
Yeah, they did a bunch of little ones.
And a ton of outreach.
Yeah, they did all the charrettes and, they must have, they went blazing fast.
Okay. I'll find it. It's okay.
If we find out where it is, we'll send it to you, just so you don't have to go looking.
So should we figure out what we can get from CHAPA? And what, and try and lay out a schedule or some type of educational path for the next meeting?
Yeah, it sounds like a dual thing.
Does that sound like a...
And not to, I don't want to leave anybody out, but David Perry had also provided comments on the MBTA Communities. I believe I forwarded you that information.
Yeah. And I heard from, Andrew Pfaff contacted me to say he was working on a draft bylaw. And he was going to do the compliance model. So I invited him to come tonight and share his ideas, but I don't see him.
Come one, come all. We'll take any input we can get.
All right. Should we move on? Draft tree policy is the next item on the agenda. So we've had, we've had this policy that we've been working with in draft form for a while. And I, recently, for this version, I added the utilities that we had negotiated with National Grid when they were here and prohibitive, prohibited activities. Just a couple of things from the bylaw, for clarity. In the hope being that we can get agreement by this board prior to the May 2nd consolidated hearing with the select board and hopefully ask the select board to, to adopt the policy. Since we don't have a bylaw, at least we'll have something. And I know Debbie, you had a lot of comments on the policy. You know, wanted, there were some... Some things, so in the one that I had done, I know there's a lot of specific steps that were based on the experience from the last hearing and things that needed clarification. And the idea being that someone could pick this up and say, if, you know, someone calls, this is what happens, that's what happens. And I noticed that, that this, you removed all of that. And so is there a direction that you're trying to go in here, or...
Yeah, let me just take a couple of minutes and say, I, I guess I knew we were developing a tree policy, but I thought it was going to be a planning board policy. So I guess I wasn't clear because typically we're asked by the select board to do these things. I didn't remember seeing anything in writing, and we've been working on the, the Warren article. So I, my approach at the beginning was, I thought this was only our remit from planning board. So I started out and said, well, if I were to draft this thing, what would it, what would it look like? So I didn't mean to rewrite your whole thing. But what I, I then realized that, and I think I, you know, got information from you also that, no, this is, this would be the town policy. But I think this is also, I mean, we've learned so many things along the way. One is, you know, how does the, you know, I think there's so much lack of knowledge on trees in town, it's kind of stunning. But when I look around at other websites, I say, wow, well, we don't have anything on our town website, or public doesn't know how to get information. In fact, the tree warden name and number isn't even listed on the website. So what I tried to do is, my frame of mind was saying, okay, if I were a homeowner and I have a public shade tree that I either want to plant or to remove, who do I call? What do I do? And so I tried to, I would say, make it a hot, like a step up higher level and then refer to forms, you know, that would be, either are available, I think they are available, Excel spreadsheets and collection forms. And those could be maybe attached to a policy. I think it's really important that people who live on scenic roads, for example, know they live on a scenic road, and that when they want to take a tree down, they have to put in their own words, why do they want to take this tree down? So even when we see the list of trees coming up for the May 2nd, there's a tree that's on there that has been on there before and rejected. And I don't know why that's on there. So I think we need to really, you know, so we, we didn't get a bylaw passed, but that doesn't mean our own procedures can't be stepped up. And I feel that I'm trying to, you know, what I did is, I set out to say, okay, this is to, also to help people understand that we're trying to protect trees, and this is how, this is our approach. And for example, one of the things, without going through the whole thing, is really just to say, it's our aim not to remove public shade trees that are not dying or dead. And, you know, we've had public hearings where someone just wanted to remove the tree because it's annoying, because it's got too much shade, or they have to pull out a little farther into the road. And so I feel like it's kind of necessary, unfortunately, to say some of these things in a, not so, not really high language. Do you know what I mean? Like, just even I am recommending, you know, that we let people know, you know, what a hazard tree is. We've had trees come up that are hazard trees that were previously on lists, and that suddenly they're hazard. So there's, there's so many things, I think, that we're trying to control for. But what I tried to do is to say, well, if I were going to make a tree policy, and again, I thought it was from the planning board, so that's my, my, my bad, I guess, is I would make it really user-friendly so we post, when it's posted, people can find it and they know what to do about it. And they know also that there's a different process for scenic roads, scenic designated roads. And the other thing I wanted to bring out is that, you know, I looked around. I've put some towns in here. They're, they're pretty short. This is still longer than most that I've found. And I don't know how we feel about that. That's why I thought maybe we could put a little bit more up front because maybe people will read it, read it up front. But the whole business of tree warden and the designee is very unique to Southborough because of the 1991 Legislative Acts. And I can say, as a member of the Public Works Planning Board, the town doesn't appear to be very interested to do anything about Public Works Planning Board. You wonder how was that related? But the 1991 Legislative Acts is what set forth the select board to be the tree warden. So my feeling is, at some point, the select board's going to take some action. I've asked this board if we want to take some action, but it's not... I've asked this board if we want to take some action, but it's not really within our purview. And I kind of fear that that board may go away completely because they're starting to come up with other ideas of how to handle some of those matters. And that leaves the tree warden. So I wanted to make really perfectly clear in here and say one time that the, the select board are acting as the tree warden. But I found in a lot of examples where, you know, we, we have an agreement with the select board that the designee doesn't make decisions about the trees. And so I wanted to separate out that the designee is really just carrying out the orders. And so I, I tried to clarify that in here. So that's essentially what this is, it's just alternative language. If we want to have something in place by May second, then this doesn't work. But I would like to maybe come back to the idea of, you know, getting some, I, I support getting something out for, for the next tree hearing. Because, you know, crazy things keep happening. Really, really crazy things keep happening. And every, you know, and so I think that if we can revisit this, put something out and then get, select board's agreement that, you know, we might want to modify it, I would, I would like to go through some of my, my thoughts in more detail. What, what do you think about that?
Well, a couple of things. So putting things up on the website, changing forms, having things be more user friendly are all things that, that we can work on that are outside of the, outside of the policy.
Yeah.
The policy, you know, was, the selectmen have had this for a while. I worked on this with Lisa, so have buy-in at least from one of the select board. And it's very specific to Southborough based on the experience and the last hearing and things that didn't go that well to try and correct and make very clear what, what the process is. So this is for, you know, the select board to follow, not necessarily for residents.
Well, can we do something on our own for residents, especially for scenic roads?
Absolutely, yeah.
Could that be a policy? A scenic road, I mean, I,
Or just a informational sheet or, so the, the, the select board's the tree warden, so they adopt the policy.
If they weren't the tree warden, it still would have to go to the select board or it gets done?
No, it would go to the tree warden. Whoever the tree warden is, they adopt the policy.
Okay. So if we, if we want any changes, there's no guarantee that if we agree to your policy, there's no guarantee that we could make changes in the future, they might not allow it, right? I mean, I think, I mean, when I look online as a member of the public, I'm look, I look at policies because I want to know, how do things get done in town? Maybe something I don't know about and I go to look and say, well, what is our policy? So I think of a policy as really being written for the public. Especially, what I'd like to see, you know, in the future is, I, I'd like to see a, a form really strongly. I can't, probably been asked a hundred times, where's the form on our, on our website? This isn't just a website matter, it's that we have people that are working in DPW that are answering calls from the public, it's not that many, they're not that many for May second, not like the last lists, but, and they're,
There are a lot?
There's a lot, okay, but, and, and, no, not to say it's not a lot of work, but I would like to hear from the public, the person, why do they want that tree removed? Rather than it, it getting translated through somebody at the, you know, who's answering the call at the DPW, really. And, and I, I strongly would like them to know, we're not just in the business of taking down trees, you know, because you don't like it. And we have been there before. The stub toe lane, I don't recall those being dead. And we, we've been there where they're not dead. So there's a few things that I'd really, really like to, you know, kind of insert maybe into your policy. If it's scenic roads, I would like the application to come to planning board. So that we have more control over that.
It currently does.
Is the form for the stone wall and shade tree?
Yes.
The form with all the elements that Mimi has in the policy, that she wants all that information collected, is that on our form currently?
I can tell you that we have a stone, it, no. We have an application.
Right.
Scenic road, stone wall.
We just saw one tonight, yep.
On the website.
Right.
And it's basically a typical application, applicant, location, you know, identify
Yep.
The tree or the stone wall. Sign it and here's the instructions, submit plans.
Right.
Request letter and a PDF.
Yep.
Or whatever. And then when they come to me, I, before they submit officially, I go through it with them and say, you need to show this and you need to add this and make sure you,
Is that just for stone wall or that's, not for public shade tree?
It's both. It's scenic road, anything, either stone wall or tree removal.
So who, who is putting those applications in? They're all coming from Chris Leroy?
So, for,
So I would prefer a member of the public do it. That's, that's one change I would like to make.
Well, he, they gather a list all year or
Right.
Every year, and they compile the list and they then present their, most recently, it's the DPW Scenic Road Tree List twenty twenty-three, so there's sixty-four trees there.
Yeah.
And they may have a couple others from, say, National Grid that ask to be thrown in. Then we'll have, like upcoming, we have three applications in now with public hearings. So the DPW applies to the planning board for that scenic road tree removal. And what they do is they fill out the application, as the DPW is the applicant, they provide the list, the forms that get filled out with the request, and then the arbors report.
Yeah, I, I would just, you know, my frustration is, and you know, I've spent hours, my son has spent hours, Mimi has spent hours, we've seen each other on the roads, we've walked around some of these trees. And people come to our hearings and say, I, I object, that's not dead. And, and so I really think on, so I don't know what to say about this, you know, the non-scenic roads, because the town, you know, didn't adopt our, you know, proposal to make all the roads scenic. But we have what we have and I do feel that we should fiercely protect our scenic roads. And I mean, we, we've gotten packages from the tree warden that is the wrong tree. It's the wrong picture. You know, I, I really think that I would like to know from the neighbor, the person, or, or if it's a member of the town, it could be that annoying tree or something and obviously anybody can put in a application for tree removal, but, so that is one thing that I would like to change. For example, there's a tree on my road that we rejected last time. And I know the neighbor and the neighbor did not put in that tree. Why is it back up on the list? I feel like there's certain roads that just get more attention than others. And I'd like to know from the neighbor or whoever put the, had the call in, what's with this tree? Remember, when the arborist filled out the forms, there were like four categories. And this is the arborist from Rhode Island recommended anything that was what, dead or dying, right? So that's like a lot of, lot of trees. We, we, we just did this giant catch-up to get like a lot of the dead trees. But there, yes, there are some that are dying, but they might make it another five years.
Did you have a chance to look at the application I just sent around, the new DPW list?
Well,
In that format?
They're, they're in your packet tonight.
It's in the packet tonight.
But I,
I, I had, I didn't know where it was, because I couldn't, I didn't see it was listed on the hearing page. So Mimi told me it was on the DPW, it's the same packet, right, that's on the DPW website?
Yes, it should be.
I, I glanced at it, but I, but I know that,
We posted them today up on news and announcements, but
Okay.
You know, we'll be sending them out if I have an already PDF, the PDF version of it.
I just think the whole system is a mess. And I really know that we're trying to make it better, but I myself is, I'm confused. For example, when are we using an arborist? I'm not sure. People have gotten up at town meeting to say, hey, I see a member from the planning board and members from the select board walking around looking at trees.
So an, so an arborist views all the trees? They viewed, he viewed all the ones that are on the, the current list?
Does not just scenic roads?
And he did the one before, the hearing before too.
Okay.
Not the dead trees, but all the other ones.
Okay, good.
And it has gotten better. I mean, I, as Chris Leroy is working on this, he's super diligent and he's, like this newer application, the newer applications that he submitted, it, it appears much clear. But I do understand, like, there's a tree that's coming back in its own application.
Why, I want to know.
So we catch some, you know, those are obvious when Mimi,
And it's on a scenic road? I, I think there should be a higher level of protect, I mean, we just went to town meeting and we, we made this pitch that there is higher protections for scenic roads. And when I look at this tree list, a lot, a lot are on scenic roads. And when I look, you know, of course, the last one that had the hundred trees, I mean, there's a lot on scenic roads. And that's not to say there aren't dead trees all over town, there's, they're all over town.
Well, so a couple of things. The, the last hearing that we tried to catch up on all the dead trees, those were from the arborist's report as dead.
Which are only scenic roads.
Which are only scenic roads.
So I feel like the scenic roads are getting, you know, targeted in a way. And that's why these trees keep coming back, because they're on those reports. Well, one tree I know of is back.
So we're getting a little far field here. So what I had hoped is that we can get the buy-in on this, with the policy that's been out there for a while. Because there are things on here, like the inch per inch replacement, the select board has already said they're not going for that. And and I don't want to be, you know, I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good here. I would rather have something than nothing. Which, we have a very narrow policy now that just says we have to have hearings for, to take down trees. And this goes into a lot more detail, as I said, based on the last hearing and the places that there were hiccups and it clarifies it. And it defines eminent hazard, which we've had a lot of issues with that being, term being thrown around to skip hearings. So I would hope, and I would hope we can get approval from the select board that they would adopt this. And then we would have at least something. And we've come a long way because, well, there was, there was a time that there were hearings on everything before I was on the board, but Mr. Stein remembers that they came before the planning board for all trees on all roads. And then for some reason, it just stopped and there were none for anything. So we're, we're getting it back, things are, are better, we're going through our, you know, second set of big hearings and I hope to, I, I want to keep the momentum going and not, not get tripped up on a, a really, I mean, you did a lot of work and there's a lot of good stuff in here, but a lot of it I know the select board will not go for.
So can, can I ask if we can, I think I, I just asked if we can develop a policy at a future date for scenic roads?
Sure.
And that would be, because scenic roads are joint, joint hearings with the select board, then the select board would need to approve of it, or would it be a planning board only policy? I just make sure I understand.
So scenic would be a planning board only policy, but it would have to, it couldn't conflict with what the select board is doing. So the select board policy is under chapter eighty-seven.
But because it's scenic, it requires consolidated with the tree warden, so they are involved in,
Right, I'm just making sure I understand, if it's our policy, so in any event, if it's this policy or another policy, we would of course have to have the select board involved because they're the tree warden.
They're part of that vote when it's consolidated.
I mean, what, I, I guess I would like to know, you know, if we're at all, I mean, this, this has evolved greatly, like you say, in the last, you know, year or so. I guess it's a couple of years now, probably, since I've been watching it anyway. But I really think we have still more to do. And so, I mean, I don't think it's a good, I'll be honest, I don't think it's a good process. It's something that seems to sort of work. And I don't know what to, I don't know what to do.
Well, there's so many people involved, it's almost like we have to do this, these small steps.
Yeah, we've only done it really once.
Get to a goal, like, just keep taking steps and we'll get there. And we can take bigger and bigger steps as it gets more all aligned on the same track, but, you know, initially it's kind of,
We, we got to do it a few times, you know, to see, it, the first one was bumpy, this one was much smoother.
And do we need a policy for May second? Can we take some time and work out some of my ideas? See if the board is interested in that?
Well, I think you have a current draft, right, that, that you want to go forward with right now to take this first step.
Well, I'm okay with that, as long as,
Working towards it as we keep going.
I mean, so would the board be willing to go back and say, okay, we've got something in place, but we're going to revisit it?
Sure, but it's a select board policy.
I think, if I'm interject,
Please.
We, we, this is about, and Mimi, you did good work and I think we should go with what you've done. And up to that point, but not beyond it, you know, we're, we're not in the realm of overreach, which this board and this department have enough on its plate. I think that, you know, town meetings spoke volumes to me about what the, the will of the town is. And I think that we're, you know, we've come to the, as far as we're, at me as, as a voting member, would want to go with this stuff, so. I think that we should just move forward with what you've done.
I have another question. I, I don't disagree, but the packet that you get from Chris Leroy, does the, does the planning office have a chance to review that before we accept it? Or once he signs it, we have to accept it? Because I always have questions on his work.
We, can I, so,
Sure.
It's like any other application, you know, he, he gives it to us when he feels it's ready. And when you look at it, you have it in front of you, the three applications. That's what they're submitting. It, there's, of course, you're going to have questions, therefore the public hearing.
We look at it, like Colleen says, and then we give them some advice and they come back and they fix it here and there. We try to make sure it has all the information that you can make a decision on.
Okay, well, I mean, the process is a lot better than it used to be, that's for sure. But I would just ask if we can maybe revisit the policy during the year or something like that? Maybe, maybe see how it goes with then a couple more tree hearings, something like that. And I really would be very interested to, you know, hear from people as to why they want to cut down their own tree.
Okay.
You know, for one, I think that's a, a form that we should put out there for them. And maybe it makes, it's streamlined for DPW too. If somebody submits the form, it's already half filled out.
All right, so can we agree to move forward with this for May second and ask the select board to adopt it?
Yes.
Every once in?
We let them know that I'd be interested, we, or the board would be interested during, after some more experience to possibly revisit the process, streamline?
At, so, so at the second hearing?
Oh, I mean, so what's the process for this then? We, do we have to, do you present it to them?
No, I worked on it with Lisa, Lisa's presenting it, it's on their agenda. No, I worked on it with Lisa, Lisa's presenting it, it's on their agenda.
Oh, okay, o- okay. Tomorrow night?
No, on the second.
May 2nd, when we have the consolidated hearing.
She's presenting this policy as well as the-
The consolidated hearing.
Okay. I didn't see the agenda for that.
It's not posted yet.
I don't, I don't think it's posted yet.
Okay, so I didn't know she was presenting it.
Hopefully it's on there.
I just, I know that we've had this policy, but I think this board hasn't had the chance to officially review it, so I'm sorry if I, you know, went off in a, a different direction, but I guess I came up with sort of what-
So we've had this policy for well over a year.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
That, that was worked on for a few years.
I know, but I wasn't on the board, so I, I thought that when, you know, my experience recently is that we have to wait for the select board to invite us to give things to them. So I, I did not know that this was, yeah, I know, I, but that's what we've been told for other things, so, um, I didn't know that we were open to just reviewing this or I would have done it a long time ago. But I like, I mean, it's not that I don't like it, it's a snapshot of today, but I think that, um, yeah, I'd like to move on also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. So we're, so we're in agreement at least to present this, or we're in agreement when this is presented that we want them to adopt it.
Planner's report?
Planner's report.
I could, I'm going to try and get through this really fast, okay? Um, so zoning map update, we're working on some revisions still, um, so we're getting close to that. They've been super helpful. Um, I'll be following up with them this week and we'll get back to you at the next meeting. Soon as we have a final draft, I'll send that to the planning board members. Um, we have the Shopsey Capital Planning 21 Highland Street Subcommittee Report. Um, a final draft was provided, there were some, um,
Discrepancies?
Um, there was, there was some question, um, from, um, SOF about, um, the implication of their parcel adjacent. So, um, in a con- conversation, I tried to clarify it with, uh, Mr. Whitney Beals and then I forwarded, um, Jesse and Tom Bicicle, who are on the Subcommittee, 21 Highland Subcommittee, that information, um, for clarity. Mr. Beals just wanted to be sure that it was understood that they would not sell that property that, and I said, I'll forward that information and he said, okay, that's good. Um, the next item is, um, accessory apartments. So the ZBA Admin Laura Davis did a lot of research and created a spreadsheet, um, that we can start working on accessory apartment, um, quantities based on town code. And currently the, um, quantity tentatively based on her information is 0.8%. And, um, since January 1979, we're not supposed to exceed 5% of the total number of one-family houses. So we have a pretty low percentage based on the, you know, preliminary review of that. Um, just want to let you know, the One Stop Grant Applications for 2023, Vanessa Hale is processing, saying, processing those. Um, I just wanted you to be in the know for that. Um, so if you have any input on those, um, um, you can go through me to Vanessa or speak to Vanessa directly. Um, the Warren article that we have slated for special town meeting 2023 is the sign-related downtown district stuff, um, that zoning amendment, um, just so that's clear. Um, we have a year-end article disposition of money that was left over from the ZAC contract back in 2008, which we've been continuously rolling over to the next year to we can figure out what we can do with it because you have to use the exact same scope. Um, so I'm going to talk to, um, Jim Hegarty about the requirements for maybe the subdivision rules and regs, if it could be, you know, um, what that requires, is that town meeting or is that just for the planning board, maybe an idea, but also, um, just generally speaking, where we could apply these funds in the future if it's, um, it has to be apples to apples. Uh, we have the, um, Arbor Day Proclamation for February 28th for the town of Southborough, um, that can be found online. Um, there's a Fourth Annual Earth Day Poster Contest from the Conservation Commission. If you haven't seen that alert, you can go to the Earth Day Poster Contest, um, through the Conservation Commission website. Um, there is an Open Space Preservation Commission, um, Earth Day Event, uh, Plant Palooza Events and Updates. You can, um, get through the Open Space Preservation Commission website to those Earth Day Events as well. Um, St. Mark's School Dormitory Project, um, came to me with some minor changes on the site plan, which involved some landscaping changes, some minor walkway shifting, um, uh, a proposed small fire pit in the entrance, uh, in the front of the building for, you know, social activities. Um, I reviewed them with, uh, Mimi, she looked at their revised plant list, um, everything appears to be in order and instead of having them, they're relatively minor, so instead of having them come back for modification to site plan, um, I think it's best that they pick these changes up in the ASBILs. Um, so they've been reviewed by us and I'd just like to get back to them. Um, there's an additional small planting change that I'll follow up with you on, um, but I'd like to, um, you know, let them continue with their work, finish out the project and then that will all get picked up in the ASBILs. If you're in agreement with that. Okay, super. Um, let me just make sure, anything else? And we just have one set of meeting minutes?
Uh, motion is to approve the meeting minutes for, um, Monday, February 28th.
Oh, second. Where's money?
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.